I'm calling to order the Stevens Point area public school district. October 27, 2014. This is our public hearing of the 2014-2015 school district budget. Roll call and verification of quorum, please.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Earler?
Here.
Ms. Backson?
Here.
Mr. Kokonoski?
He's on his way.
Mr. Pressley?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Sherrick?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
We have eight members present. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. I might need someone to move to approve the agenda, please.
I'll move. Second.
Roll call vote?
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Backson?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Eight to zero. Motion's approved.
Now we have the presentation of the budget overview.
It's that second one, ten.
Only got one left.
TV. The overview of the budget for 2014-2015, final version of this. Oh, okay, I was going to come over there.
You want to do it in minutes?
Yeah, I can do both.
All right.
This is a little bit harder to see, but if you look at page six on your booklet, you'll see the exact same diagram. I'll start right with the bottom line so that the biggest questions are answered. Then I'll go through a series of slides to kind of explain that and build that up. And the first point being the budget per se of all funds totals $102,222,422. That's going to be explained as we go through. The second point is the levy. We have three funds that create levies, the 10, the 30, and the 80 fund. The total of that is $33,457,900. Now, in that amount of revenue over here and included in the levy is exempt computer aid. And the state has an arrangement made out where we subtract that from our levy and then they pay us that same dollar amount that's been subtracted from our levy in the form of computer aid from another GPR, general purpose revenue source at the state level. So our actual levy winds up being this amount, which is shown here and also reflected down below, of $32,786,272, which you'll see here is a reduction in the levy, $709,203, or 2.37 percent. This section of the page shows you the equalized value of the district, or some people refer to it as fair market value when you talk on the assessed side of the House. But that is our equalize. It's just under 3.8 million. We've gone up to just over, excuse me, billion. We've gone up to just over $4 billion, or an increase of 6.96 percent. That's a rather healthy increase over the last several years, generating .6 here, a levy rate of $8.11 per thousand, or a decrease of 49 cents per thousand, $49 on a $100,000 home and $98 on a $200,000 home, a decrease of 5.7 percent. Moving through this, I've also labeled it for your convenience. In most cases, these slides tie up with this book. So if we go to page nine, this shows you the change in equalized value. And this is the 6.97 that you saw on the opening sheet, or the $4 billion in equalized valuation by municipality as it works its way through. Every municipality except two went up this year.
Tom, can I ask a question?
This particular, yes, ma'am.
Is now a good time to ask a question?
You can. This is also on the same subject, this slide. Go ahead.
So if the equalized value went up, that means that our community's worth more and we can assess more, or the property tax assesses more. Why did our actual levy go down? The amount, it went down, whatever, $795,000?
Because we do not levy, our increase in levy is not dependent on the property value directly. It's dependent on the revenue limit formula.
Okay.
Unlike, say, a tech school where they get a percent of the equalized value.
Okay.
Ours is not that way. We use equalized value to determine the distribution of the levy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. This shows the increase in equalized value, the previous slide that you saw or on page nine, that table. This graph, which is one I created for this evening, gives you a good visual of how they grew. You can see very easily Park Ridge grew considerably this year, and it was well over fourteen, almost fourteen and a half percent growth in one year. Only Millador and Sherry had a decrease, and these are very small amounts. And we're in the point, they're less than 2 percent of the entire district over here in Sherry, so it doesn't have much of a negative impact on us altogether. This is the other table on page nine showing the change in levy. So we went down 795,000. So this is showing the different municipalities, and the levy from 13, the levy at 14, and then the change. There's one district that had an increase right here, one Park Ridge, one village. They had an increase of 4.48. Of course, that's related to the fact that they had 14 and a half percent increase in their growth in equalized value, so they're picking up a little bit larger share than the others. So that accounted for that. This is the same data shown in a pie breakout format so that you can see all of the different breakouts. Again, Park Ridge was the only positive number. All of these, actually, the levy went down in each of the municipalities that comprise our district. Thank you. Okay, page seven. This is the tax levy itself by community. So if we take the levy that we are recommending this evening of $32,786,272, and we apportion that to the various municipalities based on their proportion of the value of our district, their equal proportion. So you see Stevens Point is 39.947 percent of our total district in terms of equalized valuation. Plover is 23.46, the village. And then you've got Hull, which is 10, and then Stockton, which is 4.5. If you add those all up in terms of percentages, you know, that's obviously the major share of our district. And based on their size, of course, if they're 39.9 percent of the district, then their levy proportion is 39.47. And that means then no matter where you live in our district, no matter what municipality, et cetera, you are being a portion and exactly equal share by municipality as everyone is. So it's equalized, and that's why they do that. Next slide, please. This is the graphic distribution of that. The table itself was pretty good in explaining it, so the graph doesn't lend a lot, but this does show Stevens Point, the Village of Plover, and Town of Holland. You can see how large they are of the whole pie. And then if you throw in Stockton here, that's getting up to well over 75, closing on 80 percent of the district comprising those municipalities. Next slide, please. Now we're into the general fund revenue, and this is basically just showing you some of the facts about the general fund whereby if you look at the composition of state and local revenue here, this being local and this being the state, you can see that 93 percent of all revenue for the general fund comes from those two sources. So without a doubt, the revenue limit controls a great deal of what we can and cannot do with respect to our budget. Next slide, please. And this is a page out of the book, page 12. This is breaking out the source of revenue in more detail. Excuse me, if you wish to see that, it's located there. I could direct your attention to one line, and that would be in the state aid, line 620, which is a source for recording general aid, $35.9 million. That's up about 1.64 percent. So that helps out. It doesn't give us any more money, of course. It just means that with 1.6 percent more money, it helps us to lower our levy so we pay a little less locally. So that's how that works out. Next slide, please. Okay, now we're switching over to the expenditure side. This is on page 13, and this is breaking out in a little bit more detail. This is showing expenditures by major function. A function is an area in which instruction occurs. For example, all of the functional areas that begin with a 1, like 110, is elementary instruction. 120 is regular curriculum. That would be like art, music, math, science, social studies. In the vocational area is a 130. Physical ed, fia ed is a 140. Special ed, 150. Co-curricular activities and just general things. And then cultural and socially disadvantaged are in the 170 areas. These are all activities that occur face to face. You will see coming up on another slide, objects. So if we took, for example, this pen, this pen is an object. It's a supply item, and that could be used in any one of these functional areas. So what we do when we budget is we say, okay, first of all, what fund does it go in? And then what location, where are we going to do it? And then this is a pen, and where are we putting that? Are we putting in special ed or fia ed or art, music, math, science, social studies, or whatever? So that kind of pockets that in a particular place. So we go down through all of these different functions. These are support functions, and these support services are activities that directly support the instructional. This is all face-to-face activity, a teacher in the classroom, and these are all direct support entities to that effort. Then you get into community ed over here and a number of adjustments, inter-fund transfers, and some miscellaneous stuff. Next page, please. This is the object that I said was coming. We have things like salaries, benefits, purchase services, non-capital equipment, which would include pencils and pens and things like that, and then your capital equipment, which is your desk, chairs, you know, vehicles, equipment, et cetera. This is debt, retirement. This is operational debt, not to be confused with principal and interest payments on buildings and things like that. That's not mortgages. That's just operational debt, if any. And then these are insurance costs for district operations, not benefits. That's, benefits are up here. These are things like property insurance and the like, and then transfers and some other objects. And then if you look in here in objects, you'll see salaries and benefits take up a large chunk. You throw in purchase services, and 80 percent of all expenditures are found within those three object areas of the budget. Next slide, please. And then as we flow through, we look at our membership. What's been going on here? And you can see this goes all the way back. This is on page eight in the booklet. And this goes all the way back to 1990-91, showing the trend. And the graph is kind of nice because it shows what's going on. This table, which is not in the book, but which creates this graph that is in the book, I wanted to show you. An interesting thing is going back here from 2010 to including this year, that those five years has a net increase of 19 students. So we're not absolutely flat. We're very close to it. There's a very, very slow incline that's taking place. You frequently have years where you go up and you go down. This is a normal type of activity. This is a declining environment that is not normal in most districts, but many districts do go through a period like that. And inversely, they go through a period where they incline, and that's not on the graph because I didn't go back that far, but there'll be periods of incline, and then there'll be periods of decline, just like here. You see it goes up one year, it goes down 15, and then back up 15, so there's a zero-sum gain in those two years. So that's just the nature of the flow of things, et cetera. So projecting forward, what's going to happen in terms of our enrollment? If we follow this trend outward and don't have any significant changes in our community one way or another, we'll probably continue a very slow incline in our activity. But of course, we won't know until that happens. Next slide. These slides are building up to the revenue limit worksheet to kind of help you understand that a little bit better. This is the portion that deals with our third Friday count. Some people, many people, don't understand third Friday because it can get kind of complicated, and it is very difficult to count the children. They think it's, a lot of people think it's easy, but it's extremely difficult because when you take 7,500 people and they're all over the place, and they're in school, not in school, sick or on vacations, and you've got to try to track everybody down, it gets challenging. Also, folks don't understand that the third Friday count actually produces three count numbers on the same date. There are actually three numbers, and they're all different values depending on which number we're talking about. Well, the one number that we use, which is enrollment, is our in-seat count. And these are the numbers of students on that day who were either in school on that day or attended before and we subsequently caught up with after who were absent that day. These are the in-seat, the students we're teaching, and they are not all our district residents. They could be open enrollment, that type of thing. Then we have generated a membership count. This is a reconciliation that starts here, goes adds and subtracts these columns of numbers, which we covered this in the board meeting a month ago or so. And you come up with what's called a membership. Now, these would be our students. These are individual persons. They're not adjusted to whether they're full-time or part-time. It's just a total count per person. And these are our students, 7483. In this case, we've got 7294 over here. Then we have a third number that is generated out of this data source, and that is FTE, full-time equivalency membership, because you have 4K, which only counts 40 percent, and you have some preschool that only counts 50 percent. So we have to adjust that out, and we get a number that's 7245. That number is a number that's used for the revenue limit, full-time equivalency. Okay, so next slide, please. This is 70, that number, 7245, is located right there on the revenue limits spreadsheet. Now, I'm not going to try to teach everybody how to use this, but just generally, this is a data calculation side of the form where you compute certain things that the numbers from that are used in this side of the sheet where you fall down through the expenses. This showing last year's revenue limit. This showing the three-year rolling average prior, the three-year rolling average now, which includes this year's FTE numbers, et cetera. And then in this case, we had a slight decline, 11 students over these two average numbers, which generated a little over $100,000 in revenue limit authority because it holds us harmless for a period of time. This is a calculation area here. We see the computer aid where we came up with that $67,000, which is a factor based upon the computer aid value in our district right here, some $83 million divided by our TIFian equalized aid. And that goes over on this side of the worksheet. So as we fall down through this worksheet, we find out what we're allowed over here to have is a total revenue limit. We subtract from that this number here, which is the equalized aid, the general aid that's given to us, and that leaves us with a maximum allowable that we can levy. And most districts in the state, that's the amount that they levy because they have to. Yes, ma'am?
Is that in our book or our packet?
That's in the handout. That was in your packet?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. That's in your pack, in your handout packet.
Page 38.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I can go back over that again. If you can find that, it's in your packet. I can go over that again kind of quickly. Again, you know, we don't need to go through all the calculations because it can get kind of complicated. You all able to find that?
Yeah.
In your packets? Okay. So again, this... Okay, again, the left half of the sheet is a calculation area where we come up with numbers that are then placed into this side of the right side of the limit worksheet where we begin with last year's revenue limit, and then we begin to make adjustments based on whatever the state's allowing, and then per pupil increase, and then different adjustments like transfer of service. And then you have the area here where you, down in here, where you had to put in the money for the non-recurring referendum that you did last month. That goes in here. And then it all adds up with these different adjustments that may or may not be in place in a given district. And you come up with a number here, which is the total authorized revenue limit. Now, from that, once we get the October 15 certification of the general levy, excuse me, general aid, that number is then placed in here and subtracted from the revenue limit to give us this number, which is the maximum allowed levy. Then we have to apportion that out based on the 10 fund and any items that are in the non-referendum debt to come up with that amount. Added to that are things that were approved down here in referendum plus community ed, and we come up with a total here. And then you subtract the computer aid from that, and you come up with your levy. When you subtract, excuse me, when you divide that by the equalized value TIF out, you then get your $8.11 per thousand, and that's how the sheet works through. So it's pretty clear what our maximum allowed is, and every single penny of that is needed in order to meet our obligations. Next slide, please. Which brings us back to the beginning, which was this sheet that shows that what we're asking this evening, as indicated in the memo, is approving the budget figure, $102 million. And then there's a revenue amount, which I put on the first slide, and I didn't put on here, but it's on 95 million. It's on page 12, the bottom right-hand side, $95,872,603. That's in the memo for this evening in the main board action. And that would generate this levy here of $32 million, decreases $795,000, and a levy rate of $8.11 per thousand, which is a decrease of 49 cents. And other points of highlight, that's the financial walkthrough. The other thing I might point out is I added a couple of things this year to try to help the public in general. If you look at page 14, I included in the booklet on page 14 a sample of the how to read your property tax bill and what each areas tie up to. And you'll notice, for example, in item H, the estimated fair market value, $85,700. In that example, that is equivalent to equalized value, only, of course, we only look at municipalities, at the entire municipality. We don't look at individual properties. We levy on a municipality. The municipalities turn it around and levy based upon the assessed value. And just quickly, I'll take you through that. If you'd hit the next slide. This is explaining assessed and equalized value. This equalized value will remain the same. In this example, let's say the levy rate were $8.89 a thousand, and our school levy to the municipality is 1.6 million. I'm going to show you this slide and two others. These numbers, of course, will not change. Also, the school levy will not change. What you're going to see change is this number right here, where the municipality is levying or is assessing at a rate other than the fair market value. It can be equal to, as this is, or it can be less than or greater than. It will generate a different assessed rate, but you'll see we're not levying anything different. So the rate is just a factor of multiple, or division. It's just a matter of you changing the denominator to a non-common denominator, although the numerator stays the same. You generate a different product, which is the rate, but it actually produces exactly the same amount of money. So this is a case where in that item H, if every property within the municipality were exactly assessed at fair market value or equalized value, and there were no other adjustments, you know, DNR adjustments or anything else that the municipality had, you'd come out at the same rate that we're approving this evening. Now, if you, next slide. Here's a case where the values have been dropping because they don't reevaluate every year. They do, they go several years until it falls to a certain percent level, then they have to reassess. But in this case, the property value, the percent of fair market value is at 96.43. And you'll see that, like item D, in fact, that's the same amount there, and item D, the average assessed ratio is .9643. So they're not at 100 percent. They're not at fair market value. They are not at equalized. So we're still levying the exact same amount, but the rates changed. It's 921, and where the school rate is at 889. But they're actually producing the exact same levy. It's just we changed the denominator, is all. So it's not, we're not taxing more. You know, these people in this municipality are not paying more than their fair share. It's just the fact that that municipality rate is not at fair market value. Now, on the next slide, theirs where they maybe just completed a reassessment, and a lot of times they like to take it above 100 percent, so it's a few years more before they have to again do that process because it's confusing for the public. In that case, their rate is lower than the school rate, but that doesn't mean those people are paying less. They're paying exactly the same as what everybody else is. It's apportioned in the same manner. It's just that because their ratio is greater than equalized, the product of what they're doing by doing the division creates a lower mill rate. So that kind of just takes you quickly through that. We put these examples in the book also. These three examples are on page 16 and 17 of your booklet, and just trying to help some, answer some of the questions that I've gotten over the years from the public, or how come our rate isn't what you said it was going to be, you know, at the board, and, you know, the difference between equalized and assessed, just try to help folks out. So, subject to your questions, I would conclude my presentation.
Any questions for Tom?
Well, I just have to ask, I guess it's a political one, perhaps. So the formula, I guess what I'm struggling with is that our property values have gone up, our community has done better financially, but yet the, and the property values have gone up, but yet our levy, what we're allowed to levy, has actually gone down. So we're actually asking for giving everybody a 49 cent decrease.
It actually would go up. If the property values increase under the school formula, you've got to remember, we're really, it's, the, what we can levy is a forced number based on what the state gives us. So we take the total amount, subtract what the state gives us, and that's what we levy. You follow me there?
Yeah.
Okay. So if our value, property values increase, we become wealthier. Under the school aid formula, wealthier districts get less state aid.
I see, okay.
Because they are wealthier and can afford more on their own. Now, that difference is not terribly great because it's only 6.96, and then that, you have to look at that compared to what the state averages. I don't know what they did on the average of the state. But theoretically, in answer to your question, theoretically, the more value there is in a municipality, the less state aid you get. So that actually shifts it more and more to the local municipality. If we became poorer as a school district property-wise, we'd get more state aid to offset that loss in wealth. That's why you have some municipalities in the state, like in the Lake regions, where they receive no general aid at all because they have maybe a million dollars behind every kid versus maybe our 400, 500,000 behind every kid.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Very much. All right, we need to adjourn out of this meeting to move into our next. Need a motion for that, please?
Move to adjourn.
On paper?
Aye.
Hall post? All right, we will take, does anybody need a minute? Okay, let's take two minutes and all the next meeting to order. I have the public sign-up sheet. If there's anybody who wanted to sign up that couldn't, you're welcome to come and do that. All right, I made a mistake, sorry. We have to call to reopen the public hearing. I skipped the part where the public speaks. I apologize. I had asked people ahead of time if they wanted to. No one had signed up, so I thought I could move on. I could move on, but I cannot. So, if I could have a motion to reopen the public hearing, please.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. My apologies to the public, does anybody want to speak to the budget? All right, can we move to adjourn, please?
A motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now...
Put your microphone closer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now, I'm going to call to order our regular board meeting. Roll call and verification of a quorum, please.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Earler?
Here.
Ms. Vaxson?
Here.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Here.
Mr. Presley?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Shirk?
Here.
Ms. Totten?
Here.
Nine members presently have a quorum.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
For approval, as printed.
A second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Excuse me.
Sorry, go ahead.
We have on the agenda under 8G3, recommendation to approve proposed student achievement goal objective, which was voted on last month, and is in the minutes under 7G, so I would like that removed, and there is no additional information to say there's anything different, so it's in there twice. I mean, we just did it at our last board meeting, so unless there's something, like I said, there's no new information, and we just...
Well, the new information is that people said that they wanted to wait till after Mr. Kokonoski's was heard, on what he wanted to do with listening sessions, and that was at the end of the last meeting?
That isn't related to this, but when you look at this, how do you get listening sessions out of recommendation to approve proposed student achievement goal objective homeschool partnership? That's not listening sessions.
No.
It's listed exactly the same way as it was listed last month.
I believe that was something we asked...
Yeah, people asked for it to be in the agenda.
Be brought back, yeah.
Based on the fact that what we had waited for was to hear about Mr. Kokonoski's listening sessions, which were on the agenda past this point.
But then it's posted incorrectly, because the way it is posted, it is posted exactly the same way, the public would have no idea that this was a change in referring to listening sessions. I had no idea.
It isn't a change.
It's the exact same proposal, we just got the information that people wanted.
Then, if it is the exact same proposal, then why did we vote to support this? This was approved, go ahead with this, passed eight to zero.
No, actually, this was four to four.
This was a four to four.
If you look at your minutes, it was approved, recommendation to approve proposed student achievement goal objective homeschool partnership action. It was moved and seconded by Baker-Scott to approve the recommended district student achievement goal homeschool partnership objective as stated and presented. Motion carried by roll call vote, eight to zero.
Okay, so homeschool...
It's the second part, though.
There's two, there are two motions.
Yes, but that's two parts to it.
It's the second part that we're, that I just assumed that's what we were looking at tonight, was the second part.
Right.
Approve the addition of a non-voting board member, board parent representative.
Well, then it should be listed wrong.
But that is, that's how it should have been listed on the agenda, so that both the public and all board members knew what that was in regards to, because what was listed on the agenda was approved, eight to zero.
All right, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Can I clarify something?
In addition to that, on 6B, under the superintendent search firm presentations, in the packet, it's listed as 6C, so do we not have a B, or do we not have a C?
There was a B, and it got pulled last second, and so it didn't get renumbered in the packet.
So, this should be, in the packet, it should be 6B, under the firms.
Okay. And, yeah, I was actually going to ask where the listening sessions were, and also where the, we talked about doing something with the life skill apartment now instead of later, and that's not on here, and also the transportation report, which is under 8G2, there is no report. So, in the packet, there is no report.
You all received the report.
The public did not receive the report. It needs to be in the packet. When you say there's a packet, this is the agenda item, there's an action, the public should not have to go looking for the report, it should be in the packet. Or do you think that's appropriate, that the public should have to do that?
What I don't think is appropriate is you using a really accusatory tone. We don't try to stump the public, nor do we try to stump you. This is just trying to get it done, trying to be decent. If there's a problem, you can certainly tell me without acting like I'm doing something to harm people. We were going to discuss the transportation thing, because we, as a board, agreed to, and everybody got a copy of it, same with the consolidated task force, that wasn't included in the packet either. We all have a copy. This is a workshop, this isn't a regular board meeting, we're just trying to cover some of the bigger things to take bites out of them so they don't take up our entire meeting.
Well, I apologize if I offended you, if my tone disturbed you, but it's like every time, there's something wrong. It, I don't understand how it's...
Well, every time there's something that doesn't meet what you would like done, it's not necessarily wrong. You'd like it done a certain way, and I understand that, and I usually try to respect that, but it doesn't mean it's wrong.
Well, if you would ask the open meetings, maybe go back in Mike, and you keep telling us that when you talk to Mike, he keeps reiterating to you how important it is for you to detail everything on the agenda so that the public knows exactly what you're going to talk about, so I am following your cue.
This is a workshop, it's a different animal. We are doing, what we are trying to do is have conversations about things that would take up huge amounts of time at a board meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Just make a clarification, the item related to the student achievement goal objective, the first time it was listed on the agenda, it was listed exactly as it is this time. The memo had two different parts. The agenda the last time didn't reflect either one of these, so the same situation occurs now. It's the exact same title with the exact same information. So, the board can certainly push this to November, but there's no, really no reason to, because the agenda item's identical, and they both had two parts. The board approved one, did not do the other. As I understood it, there was request by some board members to have this put on the agenda this time, but you can certainly...
I actually jumped ahead of myself, I shouldn't have just said that's moved to November. What is the will of the board? What do you guys want to do? Do you want to move this to November, or do you want to deal with it tonight?
Do we have public, members of the public here that want to address this?
What number is that?
How would they even know?
Because it says right here.
No, how would they know what we were talking about, if we're talking about the non-voting parent?
I signed up for it, but I didn't know what was on it, because you had it on there last time, and it is the same time, and you did away with both, Mr. Vinegar, you did, you voted...
Okay, I'm going to stop, Reed, this isn't public comments right now. If it was something that confused the public, I'm happy to move it to the November meeting. The point was not to confuse the public, I put the identical thing on, because I was asked to have the identical thing on.
But there's nothing in your packet, that's what's...
There's nothing in the packet.
It says 8G, there's no 8, or 7G in the packet, so I don't, and it was done away with...
Right, that's because we already have the information. This is a workshop where we're going to discuss something that was on last time.
With an action?
Yes, Kim.
When you keep saying the workshop, read your top heading. It says regular school board meeting. It does not say workshop, and I apologize. I understand where you're coming from, and I apologize, my tone, my tone is always the same. It says regular school board meeting.
Okay.
Regardless if it's a workshop, because the way we hold our workshop, I believe everything that we're going to talk about, even if you don't print it off for us, that it is in the packet so the public can find it, or you can have a link where it can go to. And again, I'm not a computer wizard, but at least in where you download the minutes or, you know, the whole packet, that it's in there. If you want to put for the, for us, the ones that we get printed off, because there's only, what, a couple of us that get it printed off, say, please, can you use your past references if nothing has changed? So, that's what I'm going to say on that, and I want to see if we can, I, I don't know if we have to make a motion to pull that, I don't want to confuse anybody, and I was also confused of like, we voted on that, it was passed, I didn't realize we were voting on the non-voting partnership for the parent or whatever.
On that.
Okay, Reed, you need to stop, you're out of order. Yes, Chris?
So, I do have a question. If you're looking at your packet, or you're looking at your iPad as a board member, and you don't understand what an agenda item is, wouldn't you like email or try to find out what that agenda item is before the meeting?
If you have email service, I've been out all week and long, and I have not been home until, so, yeah, normally I would, so...
What's the will of the board with this? Should we move it to November?
Is there anyone in the public besides Reed, like someone that wants to present on this?
Would you like them to call?
There is no presenter, no.
Okay.
No, we were literally going over exactly what it was, that's what it was requested.
I would have no objection to moving it to the next meeting.
Yes?
I just, I don't underst, I know that Alex brought up that we wanted to talk about listening sessions. I do not recall them saying, or Alex saying, he wanted this particular part of this motion to be brought back.
Alex isn't the one who requested it.
I'll clarify, I'm the one who, I'm the one who did, and I actually, I don't have a concern with having it on the next agenda, and I think in the interest of clarification, I'd like it stated clearly on the agenda, that the motion will be with respect to rescinding the action that was taken with respect to a parent representative, so that the board and the public are aware that that is my intention. I would like the board to address whether we should rescind the previous decision to not appoint a parent, non, ex officio, non-voting member to the board, and then to take action on appointing an ex officio, non-voting member of the public who is a parent to the board. So, we can put that on for the next meeting, and I'm more than happy with that.
That's what you said, but then we were also talking about waiting until the listening sessions were established.
Right, but I'd like it on the agenda for the...
If that would meet the needs, instead of having a member from the public, non-voting, on the board.
I under...
Okay, I think everyone's agreed to move it on, and we have presenters waiting, that we have a schedule I'm trying to keep, yes, quickly.
I just have a question, I mean, I thought we made, as a board, made a decision that if one board member doesn't like the decision or the outcome of the vote, they can't keep bringing it back.
It's a rescission, it's a, it's different.
Oh, I know, I was to that meeting last year too, but, I mean, go ahead and do it.
It should be a board's decision whether it's being brought back.
To bring it back, not one board member, yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on, this is on November, Jeff, Attila, Amy, I think we all, we will, we will talk about what we're going to do with it. All right, so, minus this item, is there anything else in the agenda? So, that is G3. Okay, then I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Shirk?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxson?
Yes. All right, pledge of allegiance is next.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have two people signed up for immediate public comments. This is certainly not intended to rush anyone along, but we have presentations, so I'm going to give you four minutes. Reed, sorry, Albert, you are first.
I'm Albert Rocco, I'm the immediate past president of Stevens Point Area Retired Teachers Association. Stevens Point Area, 1824 Gilke Street, Stevens Point. The Stevens Point Area Retired Teachers Association, SPARDA, will be holding its next used book sale this week. It will be in the former Jackson School. It begins Wednesday, October 29th, at 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It continues on Thursday and Friday at 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., then Saturday, October, November 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We'll have more than 10,000 used and some new books for sale. There'll also be DVDs and CDs available for sale. Prices are 25 cents to a dollar for most books, some in the collector's corner go for $3 and up. SPARDA has an arrangement with the school board to use a portion of the former school for the sale and for sorting and storage between sales. SPARDA makes low-cost reading material available to the public through our sales in October and April. Our sales assist the school board in accomplishing its mission, which is to prepare each student to be successful. The arrangement between the school board and SPARDA shows how the two entities can compete for the public good. Board member Ms. Scott often mentions the good things that happen in our schools. I nominate this arrangement and project among the good things that happen in our schools. I gave the school board secretary copies of the sale flyer for each of you. I urge each of you to make a visit to the sale site, whether or not you plan to buy books. I would like you to see how the project uses a portion of the former school. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board.
Thank you, Albert. Reed, you're next.
The hypocrisy by some on this board has gone from bad to bizarre. Prime example, the self-proclaimed attorney that was appointed, not elected. The individual has repeatedly attacked other board members.
Reed, I can't let you go after one of our board members, we're not going to do that.
This better not be counting against my time. I'd like to know why someone can't bring up the hypocrisy on this board by a member who attacks...
Because you're being personal.
Who's got a bigger conflict themselves. That's a pretty serious thing, and I should be able to, if I don't mention any names here, or I should be, I should be able to mention names, I got, I'm the public person, the only one here, who, you know, besides Albert, shows up, and then you, then you limit me? This is the hypocrisy that's also, you're involved in.
Reed, you're welcome to speak generally about what's frustrating you, please don't...
That's frustrating me, and you did pull the same thing with her, say, oh, you talked to me, I'm not frustrated. I'm getting, you know, upset with this board? Yes. Frustrated? No.
Okay.
You got it? This better not be, this between you, this better not be counting against my time.
Okay, then I want you to s...
I'm going to tell you what's upsetting me.
No, you are going to be starting against your time, if you keep telling me what's upsetting, but if you want to start over with what you were saying, I'd be happy to start you over with your time.
Yes, I said the hypocrisy on this, on this board is going from bad to bizarre.
Yep.
You've got people that are attacking board members who've got bigger conflicts themselves, and, and, and additional, the same people are willing, you know, are, are, additionally, this member, or this individual, who wants to bring a public member, even tonight, add a public member to this board, that is willing to add a public member at the same time is repeatedly downplaying other public members' opportunity to speak. Bring on a public member through this little pact thing that, at the next time, I'll prove to you, you already voted on this issue, you know, an individual that could come to any meeting, including tonight, that's not here, but they want to be a non, they want to be on this board. That's, that's unacceptable, you know, and then, and then the serious conflict interest we weren't told about from this individual, I've, you know, and it should have been obvious by the name of this individual, I, it appears, I've been told, that individual is the, is the wife of a administrator, school administrator, the one that was up here. That's true, this is really getting bad. In addition, another serious concern here, the superintendent contacting, during your last meeting, contacting, standing right by me, when you agreed not to pay the bills, or you voted not to pay the bills 14 times, he's on the phone, calling the attorney, I'm looking at the, at the clock, 10 after 10, and he's, this is a serious matter, got to get back to me. When, and then later on in the meeting, when you bring this thing back for the fourth time, he tells you some stuff, where did he get that information from? I was watching the guy all night long, was he getting it by email? Which brings another problem on this... Which brings another problem on this board, emails, frequent emailing, that one of you, Mr. Presley, brought up, the fact that one individual here is emailing people, and I've been told there are people emailing people during the meetings. Now, that's gotta be a violation of, of the open meeting laws. Where's our attorneys here on this issue? You guys are doing stuff by email that the public never hears about. That's what all of this stuff is going on. And then hallway powwows, you took how many recesses? The meetings were in a recess, you were out in the hallway with a bunch of members talking about things that weren't going your way. And then I walked out in the hallway, because I saw the tape recording going, and it's being taped, and I say to Dan out there, save those tapes. Couple of board, a couple of administrators here, or whoever you wanna call them, no, no, don't save the tapes. Superintendent walks by, what, you're taping the meeting? Because it was still going, I'm watching it out there, I say, save it to me, I got all the proof I want for open meeting violations. Superintendent tells him, Dan, get rid of those tapes. No, you don't have to keep those tapes. I'm, I'm watching, you're at a liberal station on public television today, obstruction of justice during the Watergate thing. If you, if you know something is gonna be subpoenaed, and you destroy it, that's obstruction of justice. This is what's going on in this board. You guys do stuff, whatever you want, and, and, and it's all okay for you. This is how this board is, is operating? This is unacceptable. And some of these attorneys on the board, you'd think they'd know the best, and they're, and they're some of the worst violators of this situation. You good board members, you gotta start standing up, because this school system's in tough shape.
All right, next we have a report from Emily.
Um, actually, I don't have anything available to report today.
All right, thank you. Then we have our firm presentations.
Yeah, you're gonna introduce what's coming in?
I will, I was watching to see who came in first, yep, come on in. Yes, you're right here. Are you presenting alone, or the two of you?
Um, well, there'll be two of us.
Okay, good. All right, Ray and Associates is our first firm that's presenting. And we're just gonna give them a minute to set up.
While we're waiting, do you think Angel, you could clarify in our next meeting what the difference is between a board meeting and a workshop, as far as open meeting rules, and what we need to follow and whatnot?
Sure. Are you set? Absolutely.
Yeah, you ready? Sure. My name is Don Kusmal, and I'm regional manager of Ray and Associates for the Midwest.
Hi, Don.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Yeah.
Nice to meet you. Let me give ya, these as I go here.
Thank you.
Board copies?
Okay.
That's good, we'll take that one off. This is a packet, it's a pass, all our information.
Um, I don't feel well. Be in your best interest.
Sure.
Yes.
Bump elbows, man, thanks.
I'm sick. They wanna risk it, they can, but it's-
She's the secretary.
I'll leave her alone.
Nice to meet you, Don.
Nice to meet you.
And that's why I'm crabbing.
Good evening, Don.
Angel, do we need to shut the lights off up there? I don't remember what happens when-
Yes, I'll ask if someone's still in there. The way we're gonna do this, just so the public swear, and so that we're all aware, we're gonna have 15 minutes of a presentation, and then we'll do 15 minutes for questions.
Ray and Associates, as you can see up here, this talks about the firm just a minute. It is around 38 years, actually, next year, it's more than 38, because next year we will be celebrating 40. Forty years, 1975, the firm was founded by Gary Ray, who is still the CEO and President. The only search firm, independent search firm in the country, that has been around that long as a single unit. Others have been around, but they've been bought and traded, and so kind of lack on the market. Our carpet office is in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and there's usually a picture somewhere of our office building, which is eight stories, not very big, but it is in the prairie, and there's more than cornfields in Iowa. We have the largest network of associates. We have over 160 people who are retired superintendents, college professors, around the country, who we work with and train with every year, to be our associates, and go out and search for candidates for our school districts. We'll explain more about that as we go. We have a highly qualified staff, when you call the office, you're gonna get someone who is knowledgeable in the search business. You will have, always have people there who can answer questions, or they'll call me, and I'll call you back, and usually right away. We're nationally recognized by a lot of the different organizations, the National Association, well, the AASA, American Association of School Administrators, is a superintendent's organization, and I was president of that organization in 2004. So, I think we have three past presidents of AASA that are, that are associates with our organization. What does that mean? That basically means, right now, I work in 39 different states, doing different consulting positions and jobs, and that allows me to take a look at superintendents who are now superintendents, but may wanna move. So, that is, is a big issue. We have, we are associated with ALIS, the Latino Association, NEPC, for the, the black superintendent organization, and others that are, that are there. I should, at that point, tell you a little bit about myself, and Eric can tell you quickly about himself. My name is Don Kusmal, I was in elementary, secondary, had for 38 years, 25 of my spent as a superintendent. After I retired from there, I hadn't had enough, I went to work for the University of Illinois, and I taught there for seven years, so, and designed several programs for them, as well as convert all of their, their face-to-face programs to abbreviated and online courses. Technology is one of those things that I, that I have learned to appreciate through the years. It made me available for my board 24/7. Whether that was good for my house, I don't know, but it was good for the district. So, that's one thing that technology has been able to do. So, with that, let me introduce, Eric, you come right on.
I'm Eric Dimmitt, and I have about 20 years in public education. Actually, my first teaching position was about 40 miles south of here. Obviously, that I started teaching, and I'm from northwestern Wisconsin, I first, first teaching position was in central Wisconsin, and then again in northwestern Wisconsin, and for the last 15-plus years, been a district-level administrator in the Milwaukee metropolitan area, and then most recently, teaching at the university level in master's programs designed to prepare principals and directors of instruction. So, I, I see this as a, as a service, because I believe that the most important thing that we can do is put the right person in the superintendent's chair, to make sure that the students of the district are served, and the, and the community members, so, and, and I've been very pleased working with Ray and Associates, because I think that mission is, is well-matched, in terms of that. So, I'll turn it back to Don.
We have, we have a third member of our team, Mary Fossbonder, who is unable to be here tonight, but if we are chosen, she will be one of the lead people. Us and her, you will see. We're not giving it to anyone else, it's, and I only do two searches a year, and while I'm doing one, I don't do another one. So, you will have my full, undivided attention. That's for certain. Okay, wanna head to the next? Okay, the process, the search process is, is kind of interesting, because we look at building a profile. In other words, we have an instrument that we use, it is the 33 Leadership Characteristics, the top 33 characteristics as renowned, and as pushed by researchers around the country. Those 33 characteristics, you will pick the top 10 of those, anybody in your public will have the opportunity to get involved. We try to make this as transparent as possible. Building that profile is what we give to our associates, once the profile is complete, and then they start looking for a sitting superintendent who fit that profile, who might be interested in moving, who might be interested in leaving. Superintendents are an interesting breed, because they, if things look like they're working out well, then they try to move. Gluttons for punishment, I guess, would be one way. But it's, it's one of those things that, that we're always looking for something to One of the things that would be the first that we would develop, would be a timeline with you, as to what you would like to, when you would like to finish this. There's usually two waves of candidates, and one wave is right now, and another one will come right after Christmas. People have a chance in the superintendent position to take a look at where they are, and decide whether they wanna move or stay, and usually in January, February, there is a second wave. We do attend the American Association of School Administrators Conference, and we do recruit there, that is in February. So, we do recruit there, as well as all through the fall. So, that's, oh, we do 12 months out of the year, as candidates, as profiles are developed. One of the items with the development of the profile is, in most communities, they want to have the community involved. And we come to you to get different groups, ministerial alliance, social organizations, booster clubs, teachers, central office, administrators. We come to you to put those groups together, we work with you. And then we come, and we spend a couple days, meeting with those people, and having them fill out a, one of the 33 characteristic sheets, and we have a series of questions based upon the group that we, we ask. These questions have been developed and revised every year, over the past 40 years, to meet the needs of the district. It is customized for you, this is your search, this is not mine, you will be the one selecting the candidates, so we make sure that everything is, is customized for you. We will bring in a report that shows you the results of, of all of the work with the community, and the work with you, and we will have it all charted out, as to what community was looking for, what you were looking for, and you might be surprised that they do jive most of the time. When they don't, you know, we work with the board, to see what we need to do, or what they need to do, to get everything on track. So, that's, that's not a problem, we have done that. Part of the, part of this whole profile-building process is, is so significant, because that, once you've got it, you know, changes in it you don't want. You know what you wanna be looking for, you develop it that way, and we go out and we look for that person, and we will find that person, we will find a number of them. A district year size, we will probably have 50 to 60 completed applications. In this day and age, everybody's bringing 5, 6, 7, we will have 50 to 60. We will narrow that down to approximately 10 to 12. The best of the best, and we will bring those to you. And then you will, we will be here to work with you, but we will bring in the material for you to review on each of those candidates. We also do something that we've been doing now for three years, is a video of that candidate, answering several questions, and they all answer the same questions. You get to see the person, you get to see how they answer those questions, you get to see how they're, they handle themselves, because it is pressure to put together a video of, even though they have the time, you, you get to take a look at someone who is preparing for you. So, that comes as part of a packet that you interview here. You will have one night, we will ask you to set aside that night, so we can start at 5:30, and we'll probably finish by 9:00. But it'll be one of those where you will come out of the meeting, knowing that you have four, five, or six people that you really want to interview. And then we will set up those interviews for you, as, as you find the dates available. From there, you will interview them, oh, by the way, when you finish reviewing all the materials, to get it down to that five or six, we have a matrix. It's a force-choice matrix, where you will compare, each candidate will have a number, not necessarily a name, but a number, and you will go through 1 to 2, 1 to 3, 1 to 4, and you will circle the one that you think best fits the profile, and best fits the needs of the district. That work you do individually, we put it all together, you'll be surprised how much you think alike. There'll be from 4 to 6 that will rise to the top, and those will be the ones that you will look to interview first. After the interviews, and we work with you on questions, based around the profile, we work with you on choosing how those questions are asked, believe me, you're being interviewed when a candidate comes in, as much as you're interviewing them. And they know, by, if one person's asking all the questions, they know who they're working with. So, we try to get the questions diverse enough, and divided up enough, that you keep them on their toes. So, we work with you on those kinds of questions, and follow-up questions. At the end of those interviews, we will come in, we will run the force matrix again, and we will be down to two or three finalists. And then from there, we have worked it several different ways. We have had group meetings, where we would introduce them to the public, and the public would be able to ask questions. The questions are written on paper and handed to us, and we ask the candidates the questions. It's not just wide open. And by that, we are able to, to keep everything in, in process. So, there's, and after meeting the public, we come in, and if we need to do a matrix, we do it. Most of the time, you know, out of the top two or three, which one you want. And by that time, the group is pretty much coherent. That is the, the process, and I think I'm just about out of my 15 minutes.
Yes, we have about two left.
I got two left, okay, all right. Some of the things that we do, even after, let's say you choose a candidate, we do, you know, we set up, if you wanna do a- know, we set up, if you want to do a site visit to that candidate's current district, we can set that up and arrange it. We can assist with the contract development for that person, working with your attorneys to get that worked out. And then we do have a transition period where we will work with the board and with the superintendent. We have a board self-assessment survey that, you know, we will take and present to you. It's given both to the board and to the superintendent, and we show the cohesiveness and the areas where work still needs to be done. We do work after that and on a yearly basis of staying in contact with the board and with the superintendent to see how things are going and what is happening. We have a person on board now who handles nothing but that and does a lot of consulting work with districts to take a look at establishing leadership team, establishing a positive relationship, and setting expectations and how those expectations would be observed. So we have all of that, and we present that. We also have a two-year guarantee. If the person does not work out based on what you want or based upon what they want, then we will come back and do the search for free. Okay?
Excellent. Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Do we have questions?
Thank you.
I know you guys have questions.
For a given year, how many searches does your firm do nationwide?
We do about, between 38 and 42.
And how many have you had here in Wisconsin recently?
Um, let's see. You were in--
I was just part of one last year, the successful one last year here in Wisconsin.
And--
Just to say.
Yeah. We did Oak Ridge School District, suburban school district. We did Green Bay. We did Madison. We did Kenosha. We just did Milwaukee without doing Milwaukee. An internal candidate rose to the surface and was what they were looking for, met their demands, and that's what we recommended, not to do the search.
Yeah. Excuse me. The one I was involved in in the spring was the nominee area district. Some are very comparable in size and setting.
Anyone else? Chris, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you anticipate having groups, meetings with the public to talk to them about what their concerns and what members of the public feel are important characteristics?
Oh, you bet. Yes. Yes, we would definitely do that. I mean, that's where we want the public comment. We would, you know, work with you to get those. We also do forums, and we've had them early in the morning to accommodate people, and then that night have one in the evening to accommodate people. We've had both. And we also set it up so that people can go online and fill out the survey. We'll interface it with your website, our website, and we'll link it. And so they can go on your website and pull up the survey and fill it out, and then it'll directly be sent to ours. Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm going to ask here because I'm the one that, you know, with the contracts. Any in this information of the cost and--
Yes.
Sixteen.
It's not a contract, but is it?
Sixteen thousand.
Yes. Contract included is thirteen. Yeah.
In the, okay, in the proposal?
A proposal, page 13.
Thank you.
And the cost is set at sixteen thousand plus the expenses.
And there's some, there's some areas there in terms of like the development of the promotional material. For example, if you, sometimes districts have decided to have a print shop or something in the district that they would produce their own flyers and such versus, but we also have an in-house place where we can, we can do that also. So those are some of the things that as we, if you were to accept the contract and moving forward, we'd just have to plan for it.
And if it's done in-house, we work with you--
Yeah.
--and your people very closely to make sure that everything is legal and formable within that form.
Chris? Along those same lines, if sixteen thousand dollars is the base, what are typical additional expenses? What does it typically run to? It looks like travel and printing and so forth.
Yeah. Mileage would probably be your biggest item. I think I'm 205 miles away.
And there's some variable for that also because if you were to choose, I want to make sure in case for microphone purposes, if you were to choose that, a particular meeting that we could just Skype in or FaceTime in, if it wasn't, we would be here for all the forums and the interviewing of the school board members. But if there was a time where we just simply needed to get together rather than all of us doing the drive up from our different locations, we could certainly arrange that. And districts have used that to cut some of the cost of their expenses.
Yes. Any meeting that we can, that we can, you know, cut costs on that, we will do that.
Okay. So can I just, and trying to ballpark it--
Sure.
--those additional expenses, would you say five thousand dollars, four thousand dollars?
Four thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
So overall, the entire package is probably going to be someplace in the neighborhood of 20?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's helpful.
Yeah. Yeah.
For a typical search, how often will you be here? I mean, how often you actually--
I think there's a sample timeline--
Yeah, that's a really good tool.
--in your packet. Well, I have to find it.
Page 12?
Page 12.
Yeah. Page nine.
Page nine.
Page nine.
Yeah. Yeah. Now, those that are in yellow would be the meetings when we would be here.
And you can see in, there's the third highlight, I'm sorry, the third highlighted one down does have a red after it says option to conduct via Skype, conference call, or go-to meeting. So that could be because that's when we were actually just finalizing the profile. And we were in the nominee area search that I was involved in last spring. That's what we did. We just simply got on the phone. At that point, the school board president and vice president were on the phone. We just finalized it. There was no need for travel. So we saved on that area.
Chris?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not doubting your 20,000 ceiling. My memory is not hardly perfect, but I was involved in hiring four different superintendents. That seems low to me. And I'm wondering if there's a different, if you have a different breakdown of additional costs other than that. Because that, for me, I guess, maybe for what you do or what you want, and I'm assuming that you provide whatever services we would require. So do you have some kind of a breakdown sheet that says if you decide to go do this? I know we've had that before. This would be an additional whatever.
Yeah. I think that you would have to talk to Mr. Ray about that. I think that, I don't know that, how much room is in that. Most of the time, well, you know, recessions cause lots of things to happen.
Right.
Ten years ago, this would have been 25,000 plus expenses.
Right.
We aren't in those times anymore. And that's the reason why it's where it is. And I guess I would have to say that if we wanted to, we can, we can use Skype or FaceTime the Apple version and with you and get past some of this and cut expenses. That's going to be, I would say, about it.
I just wondered, and I guess it would depend on what the board decided that they wanted to include, how much, you know, how many different areas or things that they wanted to do--
Sure.
--that would be covered under the 16,000. I just, I don't want it to be ballpark 20 and have it be there are things that we want or we want to add up, and it ends up being 30. So I guess what we would have to determine is exactly what we want.
You won't be at 30. I won't let you go to 30. I guarantee you. I mean, I let, I, when I finished my term as president of AAS, I knew I was retired, and I was doing work for University of Illinois. And I said, the rest of my life is going to be dedicated to kids, seeing that they have the leadership that they need and keeping boards paying what they can afford. And that's, that's my mission.
Okay.
Okay?
Any other questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for coming up.
Thank you all year.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. Nice meeting you. Good to see you. Thank you.
He's staying away now.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
You bet.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks that I did my research.
We're going to transition. Oh, my goodness, we were done five minutes early. The next presenter we have is Louis Birchbauer. He's from the WASB. Lou, are you out there?
WASB is off.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Louis Birchbauer with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. Most people refer to me as Lou. My other two partners here are Roger Fagan and Dennis Richards. We're going to pass out the proposals, if we can, and take a few minutes to go through those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
You too, Roger Fagan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Roger.
Thank you.
She doesn't do that.
Hi, how are you?
She just says thank you.
Hi.
She doesn't.
Yeah, she do.
Doesn't do it.
Hello.
You don't.
She does.
Nice to meet you, Roger.
She's fighting her flu, so she's not going to--
Nice to meet you, Trish Baker.
She don't even do that.
She doesn't do that?
Hi, how are you?
I'll shake it twice for her.
Thanks for your ride.
The flu she had, no one wants to get it.
I have the flu.
Think so.
That's what she's trying. Thanks.
Well, we know we're supposed to take about 15 minutes for presentation, and we're also supposed to give you some time for some questions. I know you're running a little late, but I'm going to try and cover the essence in the 15 minutes, give you an opportunity for the presentation. I'm going to glance over a number of items so that you get a little bit of a sense as to what is in the proposal. You'll also find we're bold enough to put together a suggested calendar. You may want to use it. You may want to modify off of it, depending upon what your decision is. We also have a checklist that helps you compare what you should be looking for in firms and things like that at the end of the book. Let me give you a little bit of background. I've been a superintendent for 29 years. I joined the WASB as a consultant in 2007. I, my retired superintendentcy was from Greenfield. My roots, I worked in the Mozenee School District. For any of you that have been here for a long time, at one time, you remember Mozenee was a school district that was financially bankrupt, was a unified school district, reorganized to a common school district, went through 33 different board members in eight years. I was a superintendent during that time, coming after the superintendent left at night because I think they would have lynched him, honestly. But after the recall of school board members and things like that, I left the school district to go to the Germantown School District, and it was a cash operating district, and it still is financially stable. And the business manager is Brent Zimmerman. I know Tom Owens. He was in DC Everest. And so I have some connection to the area, so I know a little bit about the Stevens Point School District. Not everything. Every school district changes over time, and I'm sure you have some nuances I'm not aware of. So let me tell you a little bit about the three consultants that'll be working with you. All of us have been superintendents in the state of Wisconsin. All of us have a long history. We've worked with many board members. The WASB is designed to be a system that works with you and puts the board first. We work with candidates, but truly, we are here to serve school boards. We are interested in building a relationship with you. We will see you at meetings over a period of time. We have the ability to develop candidates, work on leadership and things like that, superintendent evaluation, have the resources at the WASB to deal with policy and legal matters. So in talking about all of that background, let me talk about the search. The WASB process involves stakeholders. So we are very important, and we think it's very important for you to consider focus groups to find out what your community, your leadership staff, your support staff, and you as a board of education are looking for in a superintendent. And so that would be part of our focus group sessions, would help develop a candidate profile. We would talk about developing the calendar with the board of education, talk about how you'd like to set up your interviews, as to whether you'd want to do an interview team or teams, whether you want to involve other people than just the board of education, whether you'd like to have at the end a community forum for you to meet the candidates, and ultimately, your second interview with the board of education or a community visit. Our process involves a posting. This posting will go to over 31 universities. We're connected with the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, which has 63 consultants in over 32 states. And we have a number of administrators throughout the state of Wisconsin that want to know about our vacancies. That's in over 100. And we are connected through a national search group that has a candidate, we say, profile that's developed, and that's with the state of Michigan, state of Ohio, and North Carolina. That puts us in connection with over 1,000 other candidates. We will notify all of those candidates of your vacancy so that they have an opportunity to decide whether they feel their skill set matches what you're looking for in a candidate and whether they're interested in applying. We also will contact people that we've worked through in the university, people that we know through CISA's and CISA administrators in the state of Wisconsin that have some interest in developing. We're connected very strongly with the Illinois School Board Association, with the Minnesota School Board Association, Ohio, Texas, Indiana, and also Alabama, Texas, and would be Kansas. All of those organizations use the SuperPro Match to one area or another. They also are part of the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers. Our application process involves a standard application, three letters of reference. We also have a writing component. We'll ask for essay questions that you can use to rank your candidates as well. We will assist after reviewing that and identifying a top tier of the candidates that apply, a middle tier, and a lower tier. We will work with you in selection of the people that you think you want to do first interview. We will give you all the candidate materials so that you can review the candidate materials because it's very important that you, as a board of education, get to see the nuances of the materials and not find out about it later. We'll identify as well some things you might want to look at with the candidates based on our information about the candidates, that you might want to probe a little deeper with questions as well. And then ultimately, we have a WASB resource guide. That resource guide will help you with banks of questions, setting the tone for the interview, appropriate questions you can ask, has posting information. We'll do comparables and salary information and benefits for comparable districts in the state of Wisconsin. And then finally, we will be involved with you in interfacing with the media, if you, as much as you want us to. We'll be present at your-- the state of Wisconsin. And then finally, we will be involved with you in interfacing with the media, if you, as much as you want us to. We'll be present at your first interviews, second interviews. If you decide to do those without a consultant, we'll get you all set up. We suggest that you use a consultant at your facilitation of your first interviews and selecting of people for your second interviews. We want you to build a strong bond with second interviews, with the board of education and the superintendent. We're talking of a fee of $9,000 to $14,500. That fee includes everything, based upon what we think you would be asking. That includes the consultant travels, things like that as well. It does not include travel stipends you may pay to candidates if you decide to bring somebody in. We do not recommend that you be involved in picking up any of the costs in a first interview, only for a second interview. If you decide to bring the candidate in for a second interview and then you want to reimburse for first interviews, fine. But at the initial, until you decide it's a candidate that you want to bring back as a finalist, we do not suggest that you bring that cost involved. And then finally, the WASB bills by the hour. So if we can get the search done for less than $14,500, you pay less. That's the way it's set up in our association. Now, I would like to give you a little bit of a chance to look at this proposal, since I've given you a number of things. I've outlined basically some information about the WASB. That's covered on pages one and two. Phase one, looking for the match, planning and conducting focus groups, advertising the position, the application process and processing applications is page three through seven. Phase two, choosing the match. Reference checks. We do criminal, financial, and educational background check on your candidates brought back for a second interview. Contract development and announcement of the superintendent, pages eight through nine. A search timeline, if you're going to try and establish it yourself, is outlined in weeks on page 10. However, some people get confused, and they like to see how it falls down chronologically. So you have a sample there for yourself. There we talk about the history, we talk about the fee schedule. You have the consultant's background. You'll have Dennis Richards, Roger Fagan, and myself. We would be the people that would be basically working with you. You have a National Association of Superintendent Searchers letter, talks about the goals and objectives of that organization. There's a letter from them, and ultimately, you have the checklist of what you can look for. And those are the high points of my presentation. I can go into more depth based upon your questions, but that will keep us pretty close to on schedule.
You guys have questions for Lou? Go ahead, Jeff.
Same question as I asked the last one. How many have you done the last year?
Last year, we did eight in the state of Wisconsin. The year before, we did 17. It's a cyclic situation. And one of the things you should understand is, we do a lot of presentations at the January convention, and so a lot of school districts, we talk about the whole process, important things. We offer free consulting. We don't develop the questions and things like that. So a lot of people follow our process because of the informations they attend.
Kim?
Well, you said you mentioned the high points. What's your low points?
I think the difficult thing that happens is a board of education will say one thing to you in a meeting, but they really don't mean that. And when you walk away from the meeting, there'll be, all of a sudden, a number of things that will surface or didn't surface at the meeting that complicate the situation. So when we do through, when we go through the planning, we really work for the concept of consensus. And I know everybody's not going to jump up and say yes, but it's a consensus that we can live with it, and we're not, we're not going to do anything to sabotage it. And you have to understand that your position has been posted by, whether it's been formally with an organization or not, but you've had a superintendent identify he'll be leaving the school district. That means people that are interested in this position are reading newspapers and looking what you do at school board meetings and how you handle yourself. So I'm making no comment, I'm just indicating that's one of the things we're going to work on if you use the WASB through this search process. Answer?
Yes, you were supposed to say there's no low points working with us.
I'm going to, you're, one of the things you're going to find is, as a consultant, I'm supposed to tell you the good things, and I'm also supposed to develop in a way of giving you the bad news. And one thing that I learned in working with boards of education and board members is surprises are only liked by board members under a Christmas tree. They're never liked at a board table. And superintendents don't like surprises, and so one of the ways to deal with that is to be upfront and straight.
I like that. Thank you.
Yes?
Can you, same question as I asked the other fella.
That's good. I hope I'm answering just as well.
Describe for us how you would involve the public in this process.
Well, the focus groups, we have, I usually use the following eight questions. What is unique or special about this school district? What are the challenges in the district or areas needing improvement? If you can improve one thing in the district, what would be your choice? How will the district change or any focus areas for improvement over the next five years? And then you get to build your superintendent. What strengths, skills, and qualities are you looking for in the new superintendent? What is the most important part of the superintendent's job? What are the selling points of the school district? If given the opportunity, what advice would you give the new superintendent, and is there anything else to add? I would ask that of the public. And in this size school district, you probably would want to have at least two public sessions, because you serve multiple municipalities, but you have probably, you could say, a north or a south or a little bit of a east and west. You're going to have to decide strategically. You've got a large enough staff that you should involve a focus group with your support staff, with your professional staff, with your administrators, and then the public. That information would all be put together. It wouldn't be, the only thing that would be, the consultants take notes at these meetings and things like that, the things if it would be criticized in a particular person or things like that, that would be taken out. But the essence of the comment would be there, so that you would be able to see that, so that as you start to develop your questions, if not in the first interview, second interview with your candidate, you'd have that information. It's very important, in my experience, because boards sometimes get into a teeter totter or whipsaw effect, they, or you might say the pendulum. You move from one side to the other, and you somehow have to center as to where you are and your focus as a board and where your community is. So those comments will all help with that. Dennis, go ahead.
May I just jump in for a second? One thing that's unique about our process is we don't allow chance to take over. The focus groups are people who are identified in advance. So when we have the focus groups on a Thursday night, we know who's coming, we know whom to expect. We don't just put out an open invitation and see a lot of empty chairs. We, we know who's coming. The board would help select those individuals, and it's a way to get a good cross-section of your community and be assured that they're going to be part of the process and be committed to coming in and giving you that assistance. So I think that's something that's really important in our focus groups, because we build a great deal of what we do off of that community input, and it's important that you don't leave that to chance.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
The focus groups that you're talking about, those would be, how many people? What would you anticipate? How many people would be at those?
Well, as Dennis identified, you don't want to leave it to chance. So you'd want to probably invite 20 to 25 people, but it's a public meeting, so you can get more people than that there. We usually find there are no more than 30 people will show up at those. But if you hold a couple, that's 30 in one location, 30 in the next, your staff. And we focus on the idea of, we're trying to build for the future. So when we talk about challenges, we ask to identify things in a positive sense, because we're trying to move forward. We're not here to air laundry, we're trying to build a foundation for you. And the next superintendent. Yes?
What involvement does board or administration have in those focus groups? Are those something that you run?
The consultants would run those. We would hold one with the board, okay? We'd hold one with the administrators as well. What we've found, and I can't disallow it, but I can tell you what my experience has been. My experience has been when board members attend staff or support staff or public, they somehow intimidate some of the comments. So you'll get the, the results. I can't say you shouldn't be there, I just want you to know that sometimes people want to express how the board may be functioning, or how the district may be functioning in their perspective, or the engagement with the superintendent. And so that won't come out if you're present, but you're definitely allowed to be there. So I, I want you to know that in the districts that I've operated with, there have been strong enough individuals to express it, even with the board members present. It's just, it takes a little more time. It comes more, we hold the sessions to about an hour, and it usually happens in the last 15 to 20 minutes. So the first 20, they're a little nice, nice, but after that, they open up.
One of the things you'll probably want to do too is, is after the, with the second round, we encourage a community forum, where if you get down to, let's say, three finalists, we, we encourage to do kind of a round robin thing, where one candidate might be meeting with a second interview with the board, another one could be meeting with another committee, maybe your administrators that you'd have. And then the third one would be at the community forum, where basically, the consultant is there, introduces the candidate and says, you know, this is so-and-so, and he will tell you a little bit about himself, maybe two, three minutes, and why he wants to be the next superintendent of the Stevens Point School District. And then you'd open it up to the community, teachers, staff, anybody can come. It's usually held in an auditorium or something. And then you can see how that person reacts to the questions and so forth. We usually have a simple form of a couple of questions that people can write comments about how, you know, if they have any concerns or the strengths of the candidates. We give those to the board to review some places, so that the board can watch it. We tape those, videotape those forms, so if you're conducting an interview, second interview with one, you can go back and, and look at those. Or we could schedule it so that you could attend to.
And Roger just clicked another thing. Some districts might decide to bring each of the finalists in for a day in the district to meet with people, meet with groups, meet with staff, and then have a public forum in the evening. And then there might be a second and then a third date. That all occurs in the planning. We talk about the options, and then we decide what needs to occur. Really, our system is designed to meet the requirements under the law, have you do a good hire, and design a process that you feel comfortable with. That's probably the most important aspects of remembering the WASB. We're not going to tell you, you have to do it this way. We'll advise you if you're going to do something that's inappropriate, but, or, not going to say you can't do that. We're just going to tell you, you're going to get yourself into some trouble. Yes?
Advice I give all of my clients or whenever I make a presentation is, regardless of whether you hire us or not, I would suggest you do two things as a board, at least two things right now. Review your employment contract that your current superintendent has, and have a discussion in terms of the kind of contract language you want to present to your, your new superintendent. Understanding, of course, that will be negotiated between the two groups eventually, but at least you have a starting point. And second, have a good, frank, honest discussion about compensation. The 11th hour, late some night, is not the time to do that. We would provide you with compensation information, both of comparable-sized school districts, districts within your CISA, your athletic conference, you'd have that information from us. But it doesn't hurt for you to begin to have that discussion, because it is a seller's market. The candidate pool is not what it was 20 years ago in this business, or 10 years ago. So have a discussion about those two things. I think it will pay off for you, regardless of whether you work with us or not, and certainly we, we hope you choose to work with us. But I have found that to be good information for boards to consider.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working and presenting with you this evening, and if you have any other follow-up questions, our cards are in there for follow-up emails.
Excellent. Thank you.
Probably still has the flu, right?
Yeah, still. I don't know I have the flu, I just know. Thanks.
But you're not getting quarantine, right?
No, not in quarantine.
No, she was in Kenosha when she wasn't overseas. No. I don't know where she was.
Good night.
Thank you. Let's go through the next agenda, and then we'll take a quick break. This is the consent agenda, and Reed asked to speak to this.
This is a part about the minutes. I don't know how well people read them, if at all. I know you've read, read them because you picked up on the one going back in time, which I don't think is funny. It's just poor, poor workmanship and proofreading, if you just people even proofread. But it's this, this other thing you had, this, this topic of this district achievement goal homeschool partnership objective. If, if you'd read your minutes, if you'd have listened to me when you were talking about it, you already voted on the part. It says right here, it's on page three of seven of your minutes. It says here, you, you had an eight no vote on a two-part motion, because I've got the, from the last month, there was two recommendations. One, motion to approve the recommended district student achievement goal homeschool partnership objective stated above. That passed eight to zero. Then you had a motion to approve the addition of a non-voting board parent representative to recommend to me. That failed. Like here, it says it failed. You can't bring, in, in order to bring it back, you have to have a vote to reconsider. Okay? And the vote, and, and, and the person that wants to bring it back was on the losing side of that vote. You got to be on, you got to be on the winning side of that vote. Hello? You know, you, you people, this is Robert's Rules of Order. You better read it, and you, and you start coming back, and you're right. You keep voting on matters until someone gets the vote they want here, which takes me into the third one here. You got where it came to vote on paying the monthly bills with the exception of check number boom, boom, boom. You got one time. That, that, that's, you know, that failed. Okay? Then it was moved to approve the monthly, monthly bills, period. You know, that was a four, four failure. Then you got a vote, you came back again with the same one you had in the beginning, was moved the second, to approve the monthly bills with the exception of check number 28. That one failed. The people just flip-flopped their vote the other way. That's three times. Then you, you bring it back the fourth time in the middle of their meeting, which at the best, it was a flawed reconsideration, but you didn't do it that way. You just out of the clear blue, you bring back the same motion. Mr. Winiger, at that time superintendent, tells you that you can't, that it has to be materially amended. That isn't all you have to do. You'd have to be, you were, you were on the losing side of the, of the third vote. You, you couldn't even bring it back to reconsider. That, that, in fact, that one failed too. Well, that was the fourth time it passed, but you didn't amend it materially. Everything's the same, except for the fact that you're going to supposed to bring it back for something tonight. Well, I don't see where it's back in unless you snuck it in on the budget. Okay? So, so in other words, you can't pay your bills, but then reading the paper didn't make any difference anyways. So what, what's going on here? You spent two hours last meeting, and then apparently, old ones was saying in the City Times that, that doesn't make any difference, we pay our bills anyhow. So what's going on here? You know, you ought to be, you ought to be looking at this yourselves and asking this, and know a little bit about Robert's. This better not be coming back. I'm going to speak on it, because you got it listed. I know how you list it. I read your minutes, I read your packets, because I'm always expecting somebody to sneak something in. And then when I saw this, I figured, here she comes again. Nothing in the packet, and they're suggesting, you know, your, the way you write your agendas are flawed. they're suggesting, you know, the way you write your agendas are flawed, you do your minutes are flawed, or you don't, what are they, are they right? Well, then you guys can't pay your bills.
Okay, thank you, Reed.
Yep. I, I do want to, I'm not going to comment to you, Reed, because I can't, but when I went to a WASB convention, I, if I remember correctly, and I have to find my paperwork, I can bring it back in the same meeting, and ask for it to be voted on when we change the wording. But he is correct, it can only be reconsidered from someone on the winning vote. Again, I'm going to double-check on that, and if it does, we have to have a board vote to bring it back. We can't just bring it back, and that was a discussion, so. But I will bring my notes, and I will forward them.
I can answer that question, Madam Chair.
Again, I'll bring my notes, so, thank you.
The board can, if the board wishes to reconsider a motion in the same meeting, it needs to be brought forward by a member of the majority. If, however, that same item is brought forward at a different meeting, it can be brought forward by any member.
I have the WASB workshop.
I will find my notes from when I was at that meeting, and talk to someone.
That's not Robert's Rules of Orders, that's the law.
I do have it with me.
Okay. We have a consent agenda with minutes we need to approve.
There is a revision, that was pointed out.
On page four of seven, the time travel.
Yep, we time-traveled on our recess, where it said 4:44, or 9:44 PM, five-minute recess, I had typing error, it said 9:11 we reconvened, but it's actually 9:49 that we reconvened. So I have that corrected for the minutes that would be approved tonight.
Okay.
So it would be a motion to approve with the revisions.
Move for approval with revisions for the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Beckson?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonowski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Stand.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero with one abstained.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break, please. All right, we're back in session. We are on letter eight, or letter eight, wow. Yep, number eight.
I just went on six C. I mean, I know we have the presentation, but it says, listen, digest, and discuss. I didn't know if, you know, if we wanted to discuss back to the superintendent research, or if we're putting that to the future. It says, if possible, we can make a decision about the firms to hire. If not, our first priority would be November 10th, so is that what the, I'm going to assume, but I hate to assume, we're going to look at this and...
Yes.
Is indeed a meeting on November 10th?
We're going to figure that out tonight.
So we're just going to assume we're pushing this?
Do you want to discuss it?
I don't, but I think that's the way it was posted here, so.
Okay, let me explain what I did, and why this agenda is the way it is. While I understand what it says at the beginning of this agenda, in terms of it being a regular school board meeting, to my understanding, workshops and the second meeting is just, it's more informal. It's a time for us to just figure out what we want to do, where we go, have a little bit more casual of a conversation. There has to be an agenda, but it's just a little more, if, we're figuring out what we want to do. That is exactly what I intended for this to be. If it's something we all want to have a conversation about, let's talk about it. I assumed people wanted to digest the information.
I would like to digest the information, and not make a decision tonight.
Yes.
So if it is more informal, then we should really not have any action items?
Well, sometimes, we, what we've been doing is adding action items as we have to. The budget had to be done in this timeline, that's why we added it on to this meeting.
Ideally, then, it's not...
In a dream world, sure. There's just too much to get done, I think.
So then, is there a reason, we just don't have just two meetings, and then we don't have to worry about how it's posted, or any, I mean, is there a benefit to having the workshop versus the meeting?
Well, just what I just said, that I was hoping it was more casual, you know, for instance, we have the consolidated task force coming up. I said I'd like to slot an hour. If people aren't ready to talk about it, if people want to read the report more thoroughly, and it's a three-minute conversation, that's okay. I just want to know where you want to go with it, I guess is what I'm saying, and this is kind of the opportunity, this isn't as formal as our regular board meeting, I want to know what you guys think. We've never talked since we had the presentation.
Well, back to this one, I just wanted clarification, so I'm going to assume, we're going to digest it, think about it, and bring it back to our next board meeting, regardless what date it is. Just clarification, so she can put it in the minutes, or however we're doing that.
All right, anyone else? All right. Then let's do business services, and this is one of the things we need to put into action, which is to approve the budget and the levy. I need a motion.
Okay, so I'm going to move to approve the proposed budget for 2014-15, as shown on pages 10 and 11 of the 2014-15 budget report, for expenditures of all funds at $102,222,422, and revenues for all funds at $95,872, I'm sorry, $872,603.
I'll second that.
Excuse me, Madam President, I need to recuse myself, so you could reflect that, Amy?
Yep.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Yep, Jeff?
I had a question of the administration. The Portage County Business Council, has their membership dues been paid yet?
No, membership dues are paid for the Business Council? Was paid in January. It's paid for the calendar year.
It's $500.
Okay, so it's from Janu, just January of...
Through December.
Through December?
Right. It was paid January 2014.
Okay. All right. I'm going to make an amendment to the budget, to take out the funding for the 2015 membership to the Portage County Business Council, and discuss it as a separate action item for the budget.
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment?
I do.
Okay.
As mentioned in...
Prior to this, as I, as I indicated to board members, I will be recusing myself from this matter, I will be removing myself from the room.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? How is this in order, in light of the motion, and, I mean, we're talking about $102 million budget, $500. Are we, I mean, does everybody here have free rein to make motions on every $500 item?
Absolutely.
I thought it was, I thought that the motion was just to simply approve the levy for the taxpayers, not...
That would be the second.
That's a second one.
Get that far.
All right. Okay, I'm at it.
Okay. Mr. Ebel, are you recusing yourself from this conversation?
No, I'm not.
Okay, can you disclose to the public that you have a private membership to the Portage County Business Council?
My business is a member, yes.
Okay, does your business profit from that membership?
It does not.
You don't have any networking, any type of revenue whatsoever?
I have no revenue whatsoever from the Business Council.
Okay. All right. As mentioned in the last meeting, the Portage County Business Council organized an action to overturn a decision by the board to accept the irrevocable resignation of Attila. Number two, Attila was not even contacted to seek his input prior to taking the action. Number three, secrecy is still an issue. Nothing has been received from the Portage County Business Council for their bylaws or the minutes from the executive committee meeting. Also, our own superintendent has refused to press forward and send to allow the board to at least review the bylaws for that group. This is not the behavior of a public institution. I think we need to take a year off from membership of the Portage County Business Council. They need to do some soul-searching of what their mission is. I would welcome a conversation with them as a board. I did get an email from their board president on Friday late, wanting to meet with me privately. I encourage a discussion at the board level, would welcome an apology and guarantees that the situation does not happen again. Let me make a clear distinction. Individual, private entities have every right to express their wishes and sentiment when it came to Attila. However, the fact that this was organized by a group that we pay membership dues to, that's where it crosses the line. Portage County Business Council does not have the right to go after one of its own members. I moved, as I said, I moved to at least pull the funding for a year, I welcome discussions with them to rebuild the trust and that partnership.
Chris?
This is time for comments.
This is the discussion of the amendment. So the amendment was to pull for separate...
So, I have a little bit of a history, and I'll make it as short as I can. On May 12th, the superintendent tendered his resignation. After that, a number of board members tried to stop that resignation. I'm not going to say what happened in closed session, a closed session that I walked out of, and trying to non-renew. I came to the board later and asked, because I had been asked by two business leaders who had worked with students and other business leaders, and leaders of the community, who said they had never even met other superintendents, and how impressed they were. I asked this board if they would consider having a conversation with the superintendent regarding his resignation. They said no. However, in the meeting, which is on tape, I was told, if these people are that interested, why aren't they here? And I said, I will find out. They came to a meeting to show their support, and to ask the board, which we have many people who come to our meetings, and ask us to reconsider or to consider. This was not about anything against the board, it was for our community, for our students, many who are mentored by businesses in this community. When these students stay here, after they graduate, where do they work? In businesses in our community. When they leave and come back and bring their families here, where do they work? In businesses. This, to me, and this is only my opinion, this is a punishment, because there were board members who did not want to accept the resignation, they instead wanted to non-renew the contract. And because people came forward, they were somehow not supposed to do that. Nowhere in the history of this board, or in this district, has a group of leaders come together to support the board and the superintendent for the good of our students, not to put $500 in their pocket. And if you're talking about entities out there, who are trying to impress or to affect the board and its decisions, when the county chair calls and contacts board members to promote one board member, and that's you, Jeff, who's on the county board, to be board president, I find that stepping in the way of board governance. So you know what? I think you're, let me finish my last sentence. I think this is personal. That's what I think, because it certainly is not to help our students in this community.
Okay, do we have any, Jeff?
Yes. It's interesting, because I was at the same meeting as Jeff, and I did not get that impression at all. I didn't feel that the people that came forward and asked, they didn't demand, they didn't ridicule the board, they asked very politely, showing complete respect for this board, which is unlike a lot of the people I get up here, pointing fingers, shaking papers, calling names. They were polite, they were well-spoken, and they merely asked the board to reconsider. Now, I had learned, at least the way I was brought up, is that it never hurts to ask. But I guess I was wrong. And then we sit here and wonder why we don't have people from the community that come forward to speak here, and this is how they're treated. The people that were the most polite, and the most well-spoken, and treated the board with the respect are the ones that are attacked, and yet the people that come up here and speak acerbic language towards this board are, we perfectly let that go, that's not a problem. I do feel that it's a personal vendetta, and I think we should move on.
Jeff?
Well, let me clarify that this is not a personal vendetta, contrary to your opinion and your opinion, for the simple fact, we pay dues to the Portage County Business Council, period. They had no right to organize it. Chris, if you want to do it on your own, all the power to you. As I said earlier in my last statement, those individuals who came to speak to this board, individuals, private individuals, had every right to do that, every right. There's a distinction here, and it's a very important distinction, which is a lesson for our students, that we need to do the right thing. And that right thing is, when you belong to an organization, you don't attack one of your own. And as you said, Jeff, the polite thing is to ask. Well, they didn't even ask our superintendent if it was okay for them to come and speak. He has told us over and over, he had no knowledge of that. If that's the case, how is it showing him respect? It's not. So, this is not personal, and like I said, I really would like to have a discussion with the Business Council. Obviously, there are some trust issues, I know I personally have those, just because of their actions. I welcome that. Unfortunately, at this point in time, I can't even tell you what happened in that executive committee, because they won't even share that information. Our own superintendent won't even forward the bylaws. So, I just, I can't support that kind of institution at this point in time. We've had great partnership in the past, I look to rebuilding that partnership, and moving it towards the future, but we need to take a year off.
Okay. Yep, Trish?
I just feel like every decision that we make as a board ultimately has to stand the test of, what has it done for student achievement? What has it done to make our children successful? And when I think about our relationship with the Portage County Business Council, I immediately think of the breakfast that a number of us went to, I think Alex was there last fall, I'm sorry, in the spring, that we all went to for, with, that Brigida Altman put together with the youth apprenticeship program, sorry, having trouble talking. And I think about all of the members of the Portage County Business Council that had taken on as interns and as apprentices, all of our students, there were something like 35 students, that they, as a group, had taken into different businesses. Point Precision, Martin Machining, are the two that come to mind right off the, had, right off my, the top of my head, because we were at the same table together.
Partners in education.
Thank you, partners in education. Everything that we do should ultimately answer the question, what are we doing for student achievement? I can see at least one very strong, tangible, direct link between our membership and us working with the Portage County Business Council, and the youth apprenticeship program. I mean, it is, is a complete link right there, and I, for one, do not want to ruin or do anything to damage that relationship with them, and quite frankly, that, that relationship is tenuous at best right now, because of this discussion about a $500 bill. It's, we've wasted so much time and so much political capital discussing this $500 bill, when in fact, these people do very, very good things for our district.
And, and I would agree with you, Trish, definitely. We still have those partnerships with those businesses, just because we are a member or not a member of the Business Council, just a fact. We are the only public school district in Portage County that is a member of the Business Council. Out of four school districts, we are the only one. But secondly, the programs that you're talking about are part of, I believe, the foundation of the Business Council, which you do not have to be a member of to receive those benefits.
Well, I'm, I'm going to beg to differ with you, as far as whether that, whether our actions tonight impact our relationship with them. I know, and have spoken with enough members of the Portage County Business Council, to know that our relationship with them is tenuous. They're... They're pretty upset about this, and quite frankly, so am I. They are, our relationship with them is critical to a number of students that we have at Spash in particular and at Fernandez Center. To jeopardize those students' involvement with those businesses is not, we're not doing anything for student achievement. In fact, we're damaging our student achievement.
So when something like that is done, we should turn a blind eye because of that relationship? Or should we try to engage in a conversation about it? But they don't at this point in time, so.
I have engaged in several conversations, and they've been pretty good conversations.
Kim?
I don't think it's just a $500 fee. It's, I mean, we're supposed to approve a check the other day, was it for a couple thousand? So it's some other kind of leadership. So it's more than what just the $500 membership fee I think he wants to look at. And if these businesses still want to help our student, if that's their goal, can they not do it without going through the Portage County? Yes, they can. So I know what Jeff is going through or thinking of. It's that how they did it behind Attila's back, supposedly he didn't know about it. And if they wanted to come up as an individual, they had, they could have came up as an individual, but they had to come up as a group. And I think that's what he's thinking about, is to use that heading that we are a member of. They should have either got our permission for it or come up as individuals. There are some people in the public that were very appalled how that all came across. But again, Chris is smiling there, because our friends or acquaintances don't match on the same level. So they're different. So, and they are card-carrying members to my community here, community that they've lived in all of their lives, so.
Our principal guiding goal should be student achievement. How in the world does essentially breaking off our relationship with the Portage County Business Council help student achievement? How does it grow student achievement?
Alex, I think you had your hand up.
What, who was the individual who wanted to meet with you privately, or?
Their board president.
And you offered to them that they come and speak to the board?
And no response.
How long ago was that?
He contacted me on Friday.
Okay. Is there any possibility that we can make that go forward?
That would have to be a completely separate, I mean, proposal. Right now, what we're doing is we're looking at the amendment. If you, could you read the amendment, please?
I was going to get exactly off recording, but to amend the motion to remove the Portage County Business Council membership from the budget and discuss as a separate action item.
Is that 2014, 15, I think he said, wasn't 15?
2015.
Okay, so first, we need to vote on the amendment.
And I can participate in that, in that, the reason I recuse myself from the budget was because of the salary of benefits. So this portion, if.
So you're coming back.
I am back for this.
I think, Tom, do you have a piece of information that the board needs to have?
Well, I just, I think I got the answer in the motion when she reread it. From a technical standpoint, as long as you don't change the budget total, if you're just directing us, if this were to pass, just directing us to remove that from the budget and, or not pay it, I mean, that's fine in terms of the technical aspect, but I just didn't want to change the bottom line, because it probably costs us more than $500 just to change all the budget documents and everything else, you know, so that's all. But the motion apparently is to do that, not change the motion of the 102 million, but just to not pay that, so thank you.
The motion is to vote on it separately, Tom.
Or to pull it out.
Right, and vote on it separately.
Okay, so we have, we need to do a vote on that amendment. Roll call vote, please.
This is the vote on it separately?
Yes.
Okay.
To pull it and vote on it separately.
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Mr. Ebel?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Motion fails in a tie.
Okay, so we have the original motion now that we need to vote on.
I'm going to make a second motion.
Okay.
That we discontinue the funding for Donovan Group out of the current budget.
Can you explain what the Donovan Group is?
We pay $2,500 for a PR firm, $30,000 a year. We have somebody who handles PR in the district. We can reallocate those $30,000 to, I mean, in honesty, it's almost a starting teacher's salary. I'd rather see those dollars go towards that as opposed to a PR firm.
Actually, I understand what you are saying, Jeff. We are bringing forward to the board on November the 10th, a agreement that does away with the current agreement, because Sarah is moving more into the PR part of her job, and it will be on an as-needed basis, not a contractual agreement that we had with the Donovan Group.
I'll second Jeff's motion.
Okay, any discussion on that? So this is an amendment, again, all right. Vote on the amendment, please, roll call vote.
Mr. Ebel?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
No.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
No.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
No.
Amendment fails in a four to five.
I recuse myself of the previous motion.
Okay, didn't, Meg?
Your vote.
No.
Motion fails in a four to five vote.
Okay, so we're now on the original, which is to approve the 2015 budget as read.
Now I'm. Now you're accusing yourself again. So then, because the business council is in the full budget.
Then I would like to make a motion that we vote on the full budget other than that one item. And then I will recuse myself for the board to vote on that one item.
I think that's too similar to what was just proposed.
That was, it's worded differently, but it's identical to what Jeff was asking us.
No, Jeff was requesting that the item be removed from the budget. I am requesting that the board consider it separately.
Yes, for.
It's off anyway. It didn't pass anymore.
Okay.
I will note for the record that I would be very surprised to find that there is not a small item within this budget that each of us would have a conflict with. I think we've discussed the matter with Alex being a member of.
I'll recuse myself, thank you.
So, I mean, again, if we go line by line through the budget, we will find this out.
And I want to beg to differ, because I think I have nothing other than, I guess, my community building, so.
Okay.
Is that a real, you're, okay.
Okay, so let's vote on approving this budget, please.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
I'd like to move to approve.
Six yes, three, I gotta call it, sorry, three recused.
I'd like to move to approve the 2014-15 levy at $32,786,272.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero with three recused.
All right, we're on to educational services. Approval of the district and UWSP memorandum of understanding for Evolution Healthcare course.
Memorandum, or the memo is fairly explanatory, along with the memorandum of agreement. The difference is, is that students won't pay anything this time, unlike the previous times, so it's an advantage for our students.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement between the district and UWSP CPS-CE as attached and provided for above.
Second. Any discussion? Yep.
Just want to make sure, I know Keel's out there. This is, this is a program that we've had for how many years? Do you recall?
Several, I'm not, I don't know.
Come up here. Sorry, I know you like to be on camera. Several, so that we're.
It's been, yeah, it's been longer than I've been here. It's been in place, I know it's been here for at least three to five years.
Okay. Do we know how many students actually take part in it?
No, I'm not sure. I haven't checked this year to see what the numbers are, but it is, it's not a requirement of the course, so the student can take the class and decide if they want to take the UW credit. They make that decision independently, so it's always a portion, a smaller portion of the class that does that, but I could find out.
If you could. I mean, most of these students are dedicated students, and I mean, to do that, to juggle that, because my daughter did that. Do we ever have any students that don't finish it or fail it? And if we do, do we have something where they would have to pay the district and the UW back?
The, we haven't had that happen with any students, any students fail or not complete the course. But under the new agreement, the students aren't charged any financially for the course at all. So the university is paying for 67% of the course, and then the school district is paying for 33% plus the textbook fee, so the students in this current year won't be charged anything. But I am confident that they'll be successful. As you said, the students sign up for this course for the right reason, and they're well-counseled by their school counselors and their teachers as to the purpose of the course and whether or not it's right for them before they make that decision.
I guess if the board agrees, I would like to know how many student, how long we've done this? And I know that it's kind of grown and changed, and how many students we had every year? If I can have the, ask for him to do that?
It's, the board directs it.
I mean. Do you mean before we vote on it, or you just would like to know?
I'd just like to know.
Why would the board have to vote on it?
Is that a?
I didn't say vote, I said direct.
Is that a simple request?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Be able to get that back to you.
You can email it to Amy.
All right.
I mean, and even if it's in the superintendent's report, I mean, you can give it to us sooner, but even if it's in the superintendent's report, or unless you want to come up and stand in front of us again.
No, that'd be easy to do, so I will be sure to get the information and get it back to the board.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Is there anything about unions in here, Meg? Do I need to recuse myself from this?
That's not helpful.
Yep. You know what? All right, let's vote this through, and then we'll have a little chat.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you.
And I also want to thank you for putting the agreement on the back of it that was included. Thank you.
Okay, as this, the intent of this meeting is to be more informal. Tensions are clearly running high. The goal is typically to get out of here by 9:30 on workshop nights. We are at 5 after 9. The only thing that's critical on this agenda from this point on, we need to do the human resources, do the recommendations of employment, but we need to go into closed session briefly. What is the will of the board? Would we like to finish this discussions, the ones that we're having, or would we like to breathe and handle this another evening? Kim?
I would probably suggest, because the Consolidated Task Force could be a heavy discussion, and I thought that was one thing that we decided a while ago, is that that would be somewhat a workshop on itself, because it could be quite a heavy discussion on it. The Transportation Service report could also be, so I would say let's, I'd hate to push them off anymore, because there's a lot riding on that Consolidated Task Force, but unless we have a special session sometime.
Do you guys want to do like an afternoon, I mean, an evening, where we just talk, I'm asking what we want to do about the Consolidated Task Force report? Yes?
One of the ideas I thought, and it is very heavy, we have to have that large discussion, but I would like to hear, I mean, I had just a couple things I'd like to throw out there that, and an example would be ninth grade at the high school. Just having heard that for years and that, so just people's, maybe one or two priorities of what they think we really need to discuss priority-wise at another time, I think would be really helpful. Things that jumped out at them, that they said, you know what, I think this is really important to look at first. I think that would be, I don't think we have to have a great discussion on it right now.
Why don't we just keep going, and when somebody feels that enough's enough, they make a motion to adjourn, and if they get the support, they get the support.
I would agree. Because we need to go into closed session tonight, that's why.
But we could. Let's take care of this one, and then we can discuss it on the next one.
Human resources.
I'd like to move to approve the personnel recommendations as presented.
Second. Any comments, questions? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Earler?
Yes.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, now we are on to Contell's Consolidated Task Force. So do we want to move forward with the discussion?
I was going to make a motion to move this hopefully to a special session. Can't be in the afternoons, because too many of us are working, and also try to invite any member from the Consolidated Task Force to that meeting, and only carry that thing only, this agenda only, so we can discuss it. If it's a half hour, it's a half hour, great. If it's three hours, if we want their input of where they came, you know, what they, how they came with it, so I make a motion to.
You can't amend the mo, you had your chance to amend the agenda.
No, I can, I can.
Yes, you can.
I can postpone.
You can postpone.
Yep, I would make a motion to postpone it to a special session by itself.
Reed, you're out of order.
I can't speak.
Yep, you can't.
He can still speak, yeah.
Okay, let's finish this first.
Second.
That's my motion.
So there's a motion in a second to move this to its own separate special session where members of the Consolidated Task Force are invited.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you saying it has to be a special session? It can't be like another workshop night?
Well, we're talking about, the next workshop would be next November.
November is like six days away.
Well, the end of November, or the third week of November, we're talking about that. I would like to have it done sooner, and I'm pushing my own, I cut my own throat, I want to say, but that's not the correct wording. Boy, we have that problem, Trish, speaking tonight, because with the negotiations, I want to get that negotiated, and when meeting two, three times a night, I'm going, it's hectic, but I think this is important, so, so yes, a special session.
When, if you're considering asking these people to come back, and you need to understand they've already put in a tremendous amount of time, they have worked to give us the report. If you read the report, it gives you pretty much all your answers, all their recommendations. They've done a very good job, and it's now our turn to discuss it. So I think it's unfair to ask for another evening from them to come. They've already given us their complete report.
Do you want to amend the motion? That was part of Kim's motion.
For Kim, do you want to? I will draw my second, if that makes it easy.
Well, I suppose, because it would be an open session, they could come if they wanted to, yes. So I will remove the part about inviting the Consolidated Task Force members to come in, speak, or sit.
Okay.
Second. The two for me, on the public, I signed up.
Well, I would, I would like us to consider, as I looked through the task force report, there were a number of substantive items that frankly are going to take us hours in terms of taking a look at it, in terms of looking at implications, prioritization, et cetera. So I would hope that if we're not going to do that tonight, that we would, as a board, come up with a list of items that we are going to do kind of a deep dive into, because as the task force noted, many of their recommendations hinged on the realignment of. of grades, and so ultimately, it would seem to me that if we, as a board, could agree to schedule either a time for us to come up with a timeline and the topics that we want to discuss, so that we're moving them forward, or if tonight we could come to agreement on a topic that we wanted to move forward to for that next session, because I think if we try to put the whole task force on, we won't be doing service to the really, really heavy decisions that many of these recommendations...
Okay, why don't we do something as simple as this? If I have Amy send out an email, that's basically like a, I'm getting given arbitrary number, the top five things, and people just prioritize what they think they are, and we can kind of get a gist of where people's heads are in terms of what the priorities are, in terms of the recommendations, and we would know where to start? What do you think of that?
Maybe possible dates.
Right.
Google doodle.
Yep, Lisa?
I agree with Meg, I think we need to do exactly what she said, and we waited a long time for this. I don't see why, I mean, we've spent workshops later than 9:30, I think we should discuss it. We should get it done.
I was asking. Yes?
You're asking for reports, ideas that we bring it. I think everyone should have brought it, so let's get it done tonight.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor to postpone this.
No, well, I can't remove my motion, and so, okay. Unless I remove my second, right?
No, you can just vote no if you want.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
We're talking any kind of discussion here?
This is to move it the, to a special session, not discuss further tonight.
Not discuss at all?
To move it to a special session.
Uh, no.
Ms. Sherrick?
Yes.
Ms. Totten?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Evil?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
No.
Ms. Faxon?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
No.
Motion carries five to four.
I will have Amy send something out that we can all respond to. If you please give her, by afternoon, I meant like a Saturday afternoon, do we want to sit down for a Saturday afternoon and hash this out, so it's not an evening? Completely up to you guys. Give me your best dates and times.
Let's make it a Sunday instead of Saturday.
Just send your best dates and times to Amy, and we'll come up with a majority.
One's available usually on Sunday.
Manager.
Were you going to let him speak?
Yes, I was. Attila?
Yeah, I, you know, the board can, obviously it has some very important things, and you outlined several, well, it's probably been two months now, what you felt the priorities of the board were. It might be a good idea for the board to, just for a moment, pause and consider the priorities. So you're, the board is, and the district are heavily engaged in negotiations, which is clearly one of the priorities that everybody said was one. And there are four represented groups, which have to have negotiations, and Kim's right, she's spent a lot of hours and time, and that's going to ramp up here pretty quickly. You've just heard two presentations from Search Firm, which indicate, both indicated that the timeline to doing that is both before and after the holiday break. And then you have the Consolidated Task Force. So one of the things I would ask the board to consider is which ones are the most timely that need to get done the first, because they're, they are that urgent. And I would suggest that you chose negotiations first, and you're marching that path. I would suggest that almost equally as urgent is the superintendent's search. But I would also say that while the Consolidated Task Force is clearly important work, because it could set the direction for this district, it, at this very moment, may not be as weighty as the first two. And I don't know that the board has enough time to do all three of those things, because that's essentially what I'm hearing, what I've just heard, is that you want to put all three of these at the same level and push forward, and you're talking about having a lot of meetings in the evenings. And that's okay, or on weekends, but I think if you're going to do really good work, or the best work of the board, and sit back and take your time and really consider things, I think you should establish priorities for these three things that are clearly the most important work that the board needs to achieve this year. Just a, it's a caution and a pause on my part.
Thoughts?
I don't think setting priorities is on the agenda.
Do we have any other, we did, did we do a vote?
Yes, it's done, you need...
It's moved on, but we're going to see if...
Reed?
What's the one I'm talking on?
The Consolidated Task Force.
Well, I was gonna recommend the CNN thing.
On eighteen, all eighteen.
Hit your button.
As bad as, the person from the business council was asked to come here by the superintendent sat right next to me, jacking it up.
Reed, are you going to talk about the Consolidated Task Force?
Yeah. What I believe is that you've mixed in too many things with this. The grade realignment, why don't you, why don't you put that on a referendum, to see what the public, a non-binding referendum, do you support a grade realignment? Ask the public. K through five, in middle school, in ninth grade at the high school. Find out what the public wants in a referendum. If they don't want it, just don't, okay? You've mixed in one, one group, the grade realignment with the facility studies, which it's come out that these are just, a lot of things they're supposed to do anyhow, but you made it part of the grade realignment. In other words, you're trying to make it sound like if you do grade realignment, you have to do all those things. I think you could do grade realignment and save money, okay? But first find out if the public wants grade realignment. That's simpler than you guys deciding if you want it. You might find out the public's not in favor of it. I don't know, I think it's got a lot of merits, but the public may be opposed to it. Maybe people don't want their ninth graders going up to high school. Maybe they don't want their sixth grade going into junior high. Why don't you find out? You could get it on, if you, if you found out, you could put it, have it in the April, you know how long it takes something to get on a referendum? I checked with the county. You have to have it in by the ninth of December, and you could get it on the April election, a referendum. So you could just add something simple on, non-binding referendum, I just voted today. Because they had all kinds of, you know, referendum questions on it. Just ask them that, find out. It's non-binding. If you don't like it, you could, you could ignore it, but you might, you might find out what the public, and then you've got... Until April to make your case to the public. Oh, it's so great. Just do the, just talk about the grade realignment. I want to, I'd like to know what the public thinks. Doesn't that make sense? And you could put it on a referendum, you could do that, get it, questions real simple. Do you support grade realignment? Tell them what it is, and then you make your case during, during, up until April. You've got all the time, but you got to get your question into the county clerk, so it can get on the April election. Otherwise, don't, don't do this. Get it, not try to, but try to get it on an election, that you're going to, a lot of people come out to vote. Don't, don't do like some people do, they try to figure out when you're going to put it on a referendum, so not many people come out, you know? You, if you, are you serious about finding out what the people want? You know? And you can find out pretty, I mean, that's a long time, but don't, don't go sticking it down there and then scaring them off with ninety-five million, thirty-three million, you know? You'll never find out if grade realignment. And I really think that you ought to question these guys. Why should grade realignment cost anything? Why does it cost, when you take sixth grade out of, you know, out of the elementary schools, it costs you money? Sure, they like to do all these things, but it shouldn't cost you anything. It should save you money, the elementary schools. Darn it, if you had all them high school kids up there at one time, at one hundred and fifty more than you, than you would have, too bad if they don't have a gym. What are we interested in? Teaching these kids something? Or do they have to have all these special ed programs? Go over to that palace you're building right now, all that room. You know, I don't know what's going on, but first, find out. Do they want grade realignment or not, the public?
Yes. What Reed did say, and it did come up in the meetings when we were there, is, you know, you think realignment would save the district money, and I had asked in that meeting, and I think last time it came up on the board, I asked to see if we could get a list of any of these items that were spoke of, that we are going to fix or have to change. What are...
It's not on the, we already, you can't discuss it now. It's postponed.
Okay.
It's gone. Say what?
Remember that.
Yeah, remember that.
The next thing is the Transportation Services Report. Same question, do we want to have this conversation? Do we want to postpone this conversation? I'm sassing. It's now nine twenty-two. Yes?
What's, what are the questions? We got the report, it went out, an explanation of the whole...
We had agreed that we would have it on an agenda to discuss, if people want to discuss it. I don't know if there are specific questions.
Okay. Jeff, you're shaking your head yes, are there specific questions that you need to ask?
I do have specific questions, yep. I'm ready to answer.
All right, do we want to move forward with this, or do we want to postpone this conversation?
Go on.
Okay, let's go. Transportation Services Report. There's... Anyone has...
The board received the report, as did the public on the website, on October the first, and in the twenty-six days since then, I have not received one email, one phone call, one text, one letter, one personal visit, anything about the report. The report is fairly self-explanatory. It gives a history of what occurred, and if there were an issue that I would say that umbrellaed the entire circumstance, it would be communication, and we are hard at work to take corrective measures to make sure that whenever we have a software conversion, as we did, that that not hap, that the lack of communication not occur again. So the corrective actions, there are eight of them there, and as I said, we're, we're headlong into making sure that that happens.
Angel?
Yes?
Amy, could you please put either a link or this report in with the packet, because like I said earlier, I believe that when we hold something like this to the public, we need to make it easy access, and maybe that has something to do with why you have heard nothing, because just as recently as Sunday, I was out to eat and pulled aside and appalled, a person was appalled by the fact that we have not addressed it, and convinced that we're just going to hear the report and then push it under the rug, so that might have something to do with it. I don't know.
This has been on the website since October the first.
I know that, but I'm telling, I'm telling you what could possibly be that they don't know where the report is, and they were waiting for it to be in the packet.
It was the top thing on the website, right underneath where you go for your email.
Well, and truly, Trish, I am, I'm not like a guru IT person, but I am most definitely the person on my staff that they come to and everything, and to work with our website. You get to a point where unless somebody tells you exactly where it's at, it's just too frustrating to even deal with, so...
It was right on the front page.
I'm just telling you, I'm ju...
On the front page.
You can argue with...
I'm not arguing, I'm saying it was on the...
All right, does anybody have any questions about the transportation report? Jeff?
Why was the decision made to not have an outside agency do this investigation and have you, Attila, do it?
Because the board asked me to do a, I don't, I wouldn't consider an investigation, Jeff. We had a situation where there was a lack of communication among several parties, not the least of which was the software company itself. It didn't require an investigation by an outside group. This was an internal problem that we needed to resolve, and we think we found what the, what the issue was, and we're about resolving it.
Okay. I had asked the question before this report even came out. Were you in the districts when the situation occurred?
No, you asked if there were any administrators on vacation, so you didn't ask that question specifically.
Okay, I don't see that answer.
But where, well, what are you asking me?
Okay. Were there any administrators on vacation during the time of this issue?
Well, the issue began in late March, early April, and it ended on Labor Day, so during that time period, yes, administrators were on vacation.
Okay, let me narrow it down for you, since we're going to play this word thing.
There's no reason to be like that, Jeff. I'm trying to answer your questions honestly.
In the last week and a half of these issues, from the twenty-second to the first day of school, were there any administrators on vacation during that time? And if so, who were they?
You're asking me about forty people and their vacation schedules? Or you're asking about me in particular?
I'd like to know were you on vacation?
Yes, I believe, well, I don't know if it was vacation or personal leave time, but during the week, I discovered the issue on Friday, the twenty-second, I believe, and I was in California on either a personal day or vacation day, and I literally was asked by my family to get off the phone and get off of email, so I could attend my granddaughter's first birthday, instead of dealing with transportation issue. So during that time period, during that weekend, yes, I was out of the district, but I was absolutely in touch with the district, and you can check my phone records, and in fact, you can even ask the Transportation Department, who I spoke with over the weekend, day and night, about the situation. So if you're asking about me in particular, that's the answer. John Shepard? No. He was in the district the entire, the entire time of that week before and leading up to. I don't know that John took vacation this summer, to be very frank.
Tom Owens?
Don Keck? I don't know what his vacation was, and I, I'd have to, Tom was not in the district on Friday, the twenty-second, I remember that.
Greg was, because I see him at County Market, that's how I found out about this.
I'm sorry?
Greg was in the area, because I found out...
I can, I can get the cabinet's vacation schedule for you, but I'm not sure what purpose it would serve, but I'd be glad to do that.
Well, I'm just wondering where the leadership was.
The leadership was actively involved in the situation.
Okay. How is it that you weren't notified until the twenty-second, almost a little over a week before this ends, before this all went down?
I don't know the answer to that question, other than the, what also came about as a result of the, my look, my review of this, was that everybody was under the impression, at least I was, that our transportation coordinators were the ones who were loading in the information for the regular school year during the summer school time period, when in fact, what was really happening was that the software programmer was taking the information that had been downloaded, especially, including the inactive files, and he was, he was uploading it to prepare the bus schedule for the regular school year, working with the transportation coordinators and with, with John. I was notified that we had a problem. I was notified that we had a problem. It was before the twenty-second, I believe. Let me go back here, just to make sure.
Number ten.
Right, it was, it was the twenty-second, and initially, we were going to return to the previous system. So, you know, wait, wait, I'm going to, I'm going to revise what I just said about my being gone. I believe I was gone the following weekend. I'd have to go back and check. I can't remember which weekend, but I, but I remember being gone, I think I was gone the Labor Day weekend, not the twenty-second. Asking me to recall this stuff. So they tried to fix the problem, as I understand it, through normal means. I was notified, when I was notified on the twenty-second about the problem, I immediately stepped in and began being actively involved, such that I had Don Keck in my office, I went over to Transportation, so I was actively involved in, in the situation from the moment that I, I found out about it. And I believe that I was gone Labor Day weekend, not the twenty-second.
Other questions?
Yeah. How did you come to the conclusion that no one person was at fault, or no one person had accountability for this?
Because there were a number of issues that transpired over several months. And there isn't one single person that's responsible for a situation like this. It isn't, well, so when I traced back to all of the emails, and by the way, there are 6,000 pieces of paper that have to do with all of the emails that went back and forth between the district and the software company and a number of people within the district dating back to the beginning of April, end of March, to the end of, the end of August. And I have the flash drive with all of those on it. Obviously, we didn't print off 6,000 sheets of paper. I went through all of the emails, and, and as I indicated in the report, I interviewed and talked with a number of people. And in talking with all of those people, it came very clear to me that one person was not responsible. This was a systems problem. Everything from, we didn't have anything in place regarding software conversions. Like who should be involved? Who has to be at the table? What are the, what are the issues involved with that? To why were inactive files requested when it became really apparent that the communication about that was that the software company had to repair, prepare a report for W, for the DPI in the first download? And then the second download, people didn't check to see that the inactive files were still there and shouldn't have been. So, I mean, there were, there were many, many people involved in, in this situation, and not one of them was singularly responsible for what occurred. It was a systems problem. And so what, what I did was to take a look at what went wrong and where, and develop these corrective actions along with the people that I spoke with. What could we do to make this thing better? How could we ensure that this doesn't happen again, regardless of the software conversion, but in particular, in the case of transportation, when we make a change? So that, it was my look at the entire situation. Are there people responsible for having done things that they shouldn't have, or didn't do things that they should have? Of course. That, that's part of what I, what I uncovered. And we're handling those appropriately.
So if there were 6,000 emails, why did...
I didn't say 6,000 emails. I said 6,000 sheets of paper that could have, I mean, if you printed them out, there would be that many.
6,000 sheets of paper. There obviously was a lot of activity. Why were you not notified until August 22nd?
Jeff, I don't have the answer to the question. If you've asked me that before, I don't have the answer to the question. I was notified at the time when they felt like the, the things had gone so far south that they, they felt they needed to, to let me know. There, this is three levels below me. And I know that Don Keck was aware of the situation. I know that Tom Owens had been made aware of the situation. I don't know when. And quite frankly, I'm not sure that that matters at this point. I think what matters is, is that I found out about it, and we did a lot of things in that weekend, three or four days, to ensure, as I said earlier in the memo, in the report, that a vast majority of our kids did in fact get to school on time and were brought home on time. We had a few more, in my, in my estimation, probably 25% more issues than we normally would have in a school year. Which is not a significant number when you consider what actually occurred. And that's the result of a number of people working almost 24/7. The Transportation Department people, drivers being very diligent, and bringing in temporary help to, to man the phones while other people could do the work. So I, I don't know why or how, but I can assure you that one of the situations that we have put into place is that communication about issues that could result in such a situation be provided a lot sooner.
Why, why was the Board not informed until that weekend, before school?
Yeah, and I, and I've said this all along, that if there was one thing that I should have done, it would, it would have been to inform the Board on that Friday that we had a problem, a potential problem, and that, and, and put a letter out on the website. So that was a legitimate parent concern. One of the things that, that I did with the Transportation Department was I kept asking the question, are we going to be able to notify parents in time so that they know what routes that their children are on and what the bus stops are? And, and I received affirmative to that, yes, we're going to be able to make that. We'll be able to send those cards out. We'll be able to contact parents. So that was part of why I didn't contact the Board, because I, I was reassured that that was going to happen. It wasn't until that Thursday or Friday of the day or two before Labor Day weekend, when I was gone, that, and was told that they didn't think that they were going to be able to make it. On Thursday, when I left, the last place I visited was the office over Transportation. It was late in the afternoon. And I asked them the question, are we going to make it in order to contact parents? And the answer was yes. Friday morning, when I was in California, I received a phone call saying, we don't think we can. And that, from that point on, I worked on the phone and emails with people continuously to make sure that we got cards out to parents, elementary schools, and phone calls made on Saturday, so that parents and kids did know that, what the routes were going to be. So I should have informed the Board on the 22nd that there was a potential problem. And we should have put notification out on the website that, that there was a potential problem and that we would be late in, in getting that information out. But again, you know, that, that was part of why this was a system problem. It wasn't one single individual.
Do you have other questions, Jeff?
No, I'm not at this time. Thanks.
As I understand, because I'm working with the new program itself, and you can't go back on the errors or not the miscommunication. I mean, I went to the football game that Friday, and parents knew, and again, that's the embarrassing thing. It's like, well, don't you know about this? No. You know, that they were coming up to me at a football game and wanting to, a, a solution. So, and I happened to find administrator that next morning and started passing the word. So can't go back, you got to move forward. I want to thank the drivers and the extra staff that we brought in and had to pay for. And that's my next question is, do you remember how much we paid for this program?
I could find out. But you mean the software?
Yeah, the software, yeah.
The software program?
Yes. Did we get any compensation for bringing in the extra help that we had to pay for from that program?
No.
And I would think if it's, I don't want to use the word completely their error, but from the information that we gave them, and they downloaded it wrong and created this mess, we should have, I would have believed I would have asked for, I don't want to say a refund, but something for compensation for using the program, or, or give the program back and say, we don't want it, I want my check back. So not as easy as it sounds, but it's not returning something Menards, Menards, but...
Do you have any other questions, Kim?
No, I guess there weren't, well, I guess I did have two questions mixed in.
Alex, I saw you're here next.
Attila, since this is related to transportation, did you find out about the new bus lengths fitting in the garage?
Yeah, I did. And it's going to be in my report on November the 10th, Alex.
Could you include one more thing to that?
Sure.
The new buses, I think there's 13 of them. They do not have the school insignia or the...
They don't have what, Alex?
On the side, the broadside of the bus, it doesn't say Stevens Point Area Public Schools. Is there a reason for that?
I'll find out.
Usually, we're ordering those with that written, I think.
Okay.
Lisa, did you ever hear that?
Yeah. From my understanding, there were a lot of parents that weren't aware, that weren't notified over the weekend via phone call, postcard, whatever. Children were dropped off at places they shouldn't have been. I mean, there was mass confusion. And to be perfectly honest, while I appreciate the issues with software update, when you work with the software company, there, there should be that communication. They, this isn't the first time they've done it. So there should have been timelines followed. Why they weren't, I don't know. And I believe someone needs to be responsible for this. Someone needs to be held responsible. I don't think it's okay to just say, this is okay. If this had happened to pretty much any other staff, other than, in my opinion, administration, they'd be held accountable. And again, I think someone needs to be held responsible for this. While I appreciate the things you have implemented or, or corrective actions you'll be taking from now on, a report isn't, isn't enough. I mean, these children, I mean, when you're talking a district of our size and, and you don't think 25% as much, where, to me, that's a substantial amount. That's a lot of kids. That's a lot of kids. So...
I said 25% more than we usually did. I didn't say 25% of the total number.
Correct. But for me, that was my kindergarten kid, who didn't get home right, didn't get to the proper place. I mean, I, I mean, I'm surprised we don't have more parents just livid. So again, I think, I think someone needs to be held responsible for this.
Any other questions? Comments?
I was just going to ask, I think the administration has explained and is talking to the people and dealing with the people. I'm getting a feeling that we're looking for one person to hold responsible. And I, reading that, the information and hearing about the information, things like this happen. Do we want them to happen? Absolutely not. But I don't think we can just take one person and say, you're responsible, it's all your fault. I mean, I wish it was that easy. But I think all of the people who are involved in this, I think it's being dealt with. And I think this conversation really needs to be over. We've asked questions, we've gotten the information, the public's gotten the information and an apology. I think we need, need to move on.
Any other comments or questions on the transportation report? Meg?
I, I was concerned about, about what happened in the lead up to that time period. I was even more concerned, as I said, about how, what steps would be taken, put into place to, to safeguard that this does not happen again. Not only just with respect to transportation, but with respects to systems, system wide. I greatly appreciate that the vast, well, that the top five recommendations are related to software and software conversion. And I think it's a very positive thing that we have a dedicated technology staff. I, it's part of the reason that I supported the change in the position at our last meeting. Because I think with technology, I think, I know I am, I am very often guilty of thinking I know more than I know and making assumptions about what I need. And I was involved with, working with programming at the university for a number of years. So I think it's great that we've got an expert on staff and that we are going to be looking to dedicate and have a system of checks and balances to ensure that, that our experts are helping our staff to determine exactly what it is they need and how it is that they are going to, to get it. I also want to note that I greatly appreciate all of the employees who really stepped up in those last few weeks, went after the 22nd, which was when they did the dry run and realized that there were a significant number of inactive files still in there. So from that period on, as best I can tell, people were working night and day. Many of them probably had children in the system themselves and were trying to get ready for school to start and everything else. So I think we really need to be appreciative of staff stepping up to do that. And I appreciate the effort put into creating safeguards so it does not happen in the future.
All right. Anyone else from the transportation report? Okay. Let's move to restructuring, not reconstructing, restructuring the committee schedule. There was one option that I gave you when, at the time that the agenda went out, and then at Your Places, there's another option. The whole point of this is to give more time to the Board to look through the packet. So it's not kind of crammed in a weekend. This would, either of these options would give us a full week to look at the packet. We've kept the third Monday out, as we have Board members who can't be present. So we've just tried two options of shifting things around. So this is genuinely up to you guys, what you want to do with it. We can publish either one of these or nothing at all. Just keep the schedule we have.
I, I would say that the memo that was at Your Places was a result of Cabinet members, we had conversations about this. And it wasn't until actually Friday that we came up with what we thought was an equitable solution. And then making sure that we recognized that a Board member had a, another Board that met on the third Monday. And, but to try and take into account that Board members wanted more time for the Board packets to review them. So that's why it's at Your Places, because, because we had a conversation on Friday and then again today, and, and put this together. So it wasn't an attempt to, to not get it to you, just that we weren't asked to, to come up with a, a structure, but we thought it would be at least wise for us to do that and, and put it in front of you for, if you wanted to see another option.
Yep. I just wanted to point out the two that on the rationale for change on the side, it explains why, for instance, the 10th, why there isn't something. And that's because there are parent-teacher conferences. It's also why the February meeting is moved to a Tuesday. That was completely per what we want to do. They can both be moved back. I also, looking at this, we can keep a workshop on the 10th if we want to. It's parent-teacher conferences, so it's me, Jeff, and Alex and Meg. But there are other night options to do the conferences as well. So Lisa?
As I've expressed, I think it's very important that we are consistent with the public. We finally got it where our meetings now are always at 6:30, which I very much appreciate that we're doing that. We established our Board meetings at our organization meeting. And I think to be fair to Board members and the community, that we should leave our Board meetings. As far as moving committee meetings, I have no preference whatsoever. But again, if we, you know, if we want to change that at our next organizational meeting, that's fine. But I really think it's important we leave our Board meetings as is. The other thing is, while I understand, well, actually, I don't understand, but sending out an email, asking for our thoughts ahead of time, I would strongly encourage that, that we don't do things like that with the whole idea of, or keeping in mind the walking quorum. It should have been an agenda item and then just given our thoughts here.
Okay. Anyone else?
As long as the members of my committee are willing to change, I'm absolutely, I will support whatever that best serves the Board and the Board members. Whatever they, you know, whatever everyone can do. We can keep it the same or change it. I would just ask the committee members that are on, and community members, whatever we choose before we change it, if that's okay with them. Other than that, it doesn't matter to me.
Can you change committee dates or please?
No, this, this changes the committee dates. Right, it does from the, except for Novembers, because Novembers is next week.
Right.
So it, it does alter them. But it, the whole purpose was just to accommodate the extra time for Board, Board members to, to be able to read packets. So we just offered this as a option. You know, we're not wed to it. It, it works, but it's up to the Board. And as Chris said, I think Chris has got a legitimate point, contacting committee members who are not Board members, or even Board members, and saying, would this work in your schedule?
I have to say, I love the idea of getting a pack, the packet a week early. That's just wonderful, as far as I'm concerned. But as far as the dates go, I, I agree, we should always meet at 6:30. I don't know if we need to publish our whole calendar year out. But as far as I'm concerned, having the packet a week early is, is great. So I don't know, you know, other than that, I don't have any other opinion. Maybe we need to think about it and vote on it next, next meeting?
It actually changes the date of the next meeting, unless...
The next, the date of the next meeting is November 10th of parent-teacher conferences, which is, there's two of those. And it, we changed, I mean, the, the schedule that Cabinet arranged actually looks, looked to Meg and Angel, Jeff and Alex, because they have kids. And while there are other options for parent-teacher conferences, we felt it just a courtesy to try to avoid both committee meetings and Board meetings on those days.
Okay. Meg, did you speak on this?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the will of the Board. So whatever the Board.
So Meg's neutral, I'm neutral. Trish is yes. Chris is ask members. Kim, what do you think?
After four years, getting the packets more than two days in advance is always great. You know, you have more time. And then if you have internet problems, you have still more time and to, to get it. Changing the date in the middle of the year, that I have a problem with. problem with, because a lot of people, it's set in our calendar already. And sometimes even changing a date for the month can throw the public coming in and talking. So I'm torn before that, because it's not just for us. And I love the fact that you guys get to go to your teachers' conference. It never happened before. We had our meeting set, and then you had to work around it. There was many parents prior to you guys that had to choose, which, if we can move it, I don't have a problem with that, moving a date. Moving in the middle of the year, that I have a problem with. If we're going to do it, do it for the beginning of the year, not in December. December is such a funky month anyways, because now you're talking about having a regular board meeting on the 22nd. The next conversation is, let's cancel that because it's too close to Christmas. And we're not going to do that, because people are going to be gone and on vacation. So I would say if we're going to change it, let's wait until January. You have to talk to the, to the people that are on the committees to see if they're able to change that. That might be a conflict. So I don't have a yes or no, but if we're going to change it, not this year.
Meaning 2014.
I would say yes. I would, I would agree that we'd wait until the organizational meeting, but yes, not until the earliest January.
Okay. Jeff?
I would agree with that. I think we need to get the input from those individuals as far as, you know, if they can make those dates. But waiting till after the first of the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought on what you're saying.
Both get a chance. All right.
All right.
Jeff Ebel, how do you feel about it?
Thank you. I think it's great to have the board packet a week before the meeting. I love it, and I'm all about it, and I'm willing to make any accommodations to make that happen. So.
Okay. You were a no. And Alex?
My biggest concern was what we already had printed and notifying the public. But if we're going to just cancel a meeting, that's fine to stay the flow for November, but it would probably make better sense that people can plan it out if we wait to the new year.
Are the dates printed on our school calendars that have been distributed to all our parents and stuff?
Yep. They always have been, and they are, yep.
Board meetings and committee meetings?
Yeah. Our board.
The committee meetings, probably not, because we haven't had them set up with the board meetings.
But the board meetings are.
Regular scheduled board meetings?
Oh.
It's consideration.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
That's...
Oh, that's not cool.
No, it's not cool to change it.
God, I'm glad I look at my calendar all the time.
Well, I just thought of it when you brought that up, Alex, and I'm like, that's right. They have those too.
Yes. One of the, I guess one of the questions I had, as I was thinking about it, especially now that we've brought the committee structure back, a significant portion of the material that we are going to be looking at, at the board level, is material that's provided at the committee level. And while I understand there are changes in recommendations that come out of committee, I guess, I'm just not aware, do all board members receive all committee agendas and all committee material?
Turn the drop box and deliver it.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to find out about that, because, because the second part of my question was, I'm wondering if it would be then helpful that with those committee minutes, if we had them provide a bit more detail. I know, I mean, I don't want to, you know, have a novel written, but a bit more detail so that board members who aren't at those committee meetings would be able to get those minutes in connection with the materials they got from the committees, and at least would have that information a little bit earlier. If, you know, if we're going to stick with our existing schedule until either January or the next organizational meeting.
You know, I have to say, if, I really, I'm the one that keeps pushing for the packet to get delivered earlier. But if our meetings are posted on the calendar, I don't think we should move them. I just don't think that we should. I think people, I know that when my kids were in school, that calendar went up and we looked at everything on there. I don't want to do that to our citizens.
Okay. So what if we leave everything as scheduled? So I'm just trying to think of what information can we get to you a week early? You know, is it everything that isn't involved in a committee? Can that come the week before? I'm just trying to give ideas, because I want people to have a chance to read through things.
At the last, or at the organizational meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, but I thought she had made a recommendation that the committees, the way they flow, that one of our meetings, we did the committee reports and stuff, like the two committees, and then the next, the other two, would that help at all if we switch to something like that?
I don't know. I mean, I get... What basically, I think what Lisa's saying is that two of the committees that would meet on the first, that would be, we would discuss it, that would be at the next Monday meeting. And then whatever...
At the next?
Yeah. See, like the business and HR would be at the first board meeting. And the other one would be at the, technically, the workshop.
And what if you didn't have a workshop?
I don't think there's going to be much when we don't.
Really, Chris?
I guess what I think, I think we shouldn't use it a workshop word. We should just use regular board meetings.
Okay, I was just...
But, I mean, and I wish I could go to all the committees. I did for many years until they got switched to a Tuesday. So...
So what do you guys think of that? Putting two committees on one packet and two committees on the next? That would give, at least for the two committees that are on the next, it would give extra week to look at the information. It completely changes workshop, like we can't get focused, because we have to cover those two.
And then we'll just go back to board meetings and then just do the two and do the two.
How's that for administration?
That's pretty overwhelming.
If, you have, you're suggesting that the educational services and the policy and legislation committee items be addressed two weeks later?
Three.
Three weeks later.
Three weeks later. I know that was a logistic nightmare for you guys when we brought it up the first time.
Logistically, it, I mean...
Doesn't make sense to do that, though, because...
Something may come out from that.
Well, the things like on my agenda, the next agenda, I mean, we've got action items that need to go to the next meeting.
And we all will. So, I mean, yeah.
Just a suggestion, why don't we think about it and come back at the next meeting and talk about it more?
So leave it alone for now.
Yep.
See if there's anything. All right. So thanks. Yes, and thanks for remembering it was on the calendar. I think that was a really key component. All right. Meeting dates, times locations, future agenda items. So we have committee meetings, November 3rd and November 4th, a first regular October board meeting, November, November board meeting on November 10th, and the second meeting workshop on November 24th.
Could I just say one question? At our last negotiation session, at the end of the session, we had a discussion, and we have a negotiation set for this Thursday. And the, the action with negotiations happened, you know, in open session, and the union indicated that they were going to be bringing forward a proposal for membership. And based on what happened with that, that would determine what it was we would be looking to be discussing this Thursday. So I guess I just, I'm inquiring, I think it's important that, that, Angel, that you have a conversation with Florence to see if, because there was discussion about potentially moving to address a new contract, which would require the board to discuss that prior.
I'll have a discussion, but it's not on the agenda, so let's, let's move past it.
It's a question about a future meeting, because it's coming up this Thursday.
Oh, gotcha.
And then, Amy, you were going to include those dates on the agenda, the negotiation dates. So when you get them...
Okay. There is negotiations this Thursday at 6:30?
For the 6 to 8.
6 to 8. Okay.
Is your question, is that moving forward?
That's correct, because if it, it's not, it's not...
Yes. And there's been conversations with myself and Florence and Tom and Bill, and we're all set.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you.
It's been posted?
Yeah, I was going to say it's been posted in case there's...
That's Florence's...
I know. I will talk to her. I'll make sure. When we get into the, yeah. Just want to make sure that's posted, so.
Okay. Then we need to continue this meeting in closed session. 19.85, parent one, parent C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically the school board secretary. Do I have a motion to go in a closed session?
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
This has nothing to do then with ASME?
No.
The school secretary.
Can I ask why it doesn't?
I was not asked to put any, a thing on closed session that had to do with any negotiations.
I sent you an email a week or so ago. And so...
What, do you know the date?
No.
Okay, sorry. It certainly wasn't intentional.
Because we can't set up a meeting with them until we get direction from the board. It's really hard to do anything when we don't have direction from the board, and they're asking for meetings. So I am going to ask then, we call a special session this week to talk about it, because one of our priorities is getting this done. We don't discuss it. We have, we can't, they, they won't even set up meetings, as in, our administration will not set up meetings with them.
Let me check with Florence what needs to be done, and if we need to have a conversation about both of these, we'll, we'll set it up.
I guess I'll have to, whatever the paperwork I need to do then, because we need it going.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to go in a closed.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ebel?
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Vaxton?
Yes.
Mr. Kokonoski?
Oh.
Mr. Presley?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Sherrick?
I prefer to do this in open session, but no, it can be done in closed session. No.
Ms. Totten?
I know this can be done in closed session, but would prefer it in open? No.
Motion carries 6 to 3.
All right, let's take a couple minutes.